Good evening, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting.
Alex, would you give us the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me ask everybody to remain standing just for one moment. We know that tomorrow's the 50th anniversary of the assassination of President Kennedy. For most of us in the room, we can remember exactly where we were and what was happening that particular day. It altered our lives, it altered our nation. It's something to remember. What might have achieved, what wasn't achieved, we'll never know. But as we move forward, and especially from period of education that the school committee and the administration, and what we try to do is help educate people. And hopefully, in a more educated world, some of those things can be prevented, violence that does take place, and what we may be able to do differently. And then certainly to respect President Kennedy and honor him, he was president of our country and was leading us to greatness. So certainly missed, and again, those lost opportunities, we'll never know. So thank you all. This evening, folks, we started early at 6:00 because we have the permanent municipal building committee here tonight. Chairman Jeff Fien, in a moment, is going to introduce our speaker, who's going to give us a bit of a rundown on some things of the PNBC and the Board of Selectmen Initiative that they're pushing forward and we as a school committee are supportive of. And that's is how do we better care for our facilities townwide, and then certainly for the school committee, very specifically to the buildings entrusted to us to care for in educating our children. So with that, Jeff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Jeff Fien, Chairman of the Town's Permanent Municipal Building Committee. Several months ago, the Board of Selectmen authorized us to venture into looking into a facility study. We have to increase our awareness of maintenance on the buildings that the town owns, and not just buildings, fields that the town may have, and other infrastructure in the town. We put out an RFP to see if we couldn't get a company to help us do this, and we have with us tonight Ed Begley from EMG, who...
Yeah.
...start over. We have Ed Begley from EMG, who is the company that we seem to be most impressed with. What we did is we picked the school department buildings, all the schools. We have the town hall, along with the library portion of it included in this facility study. And we had the Houghton Building, which is the historic society, and the police station. Those are the buildings that we chose, so it's not all the buildings in town part of this. As time goes on, we can add them, but we use this as the core group of buildings to start with. The information that we have received is just terrific. It's just what we're looking for. It can be overwhelming when you first look at it, pages and pages of things. We killed a lot of trees for this. We prefer to keep it on the computer for everyone to look at, but for tonight, we've printed out stuff for everyone here to look at. And as you review the information, and it can be overwhelming, and there are a lot of questions, the one question that seems to keep coming up through this whole procedure is how are we going to pay for it? Where's the funding going to come from? And my suggestion is to look at what the Board of Selectmen did, working with Jimmy Clyde, to come up with a viable plan on the town's road maintenance. And that's a start. It's a great start. So we just can't look at it and drop our jaws and say, you know, how are we going to do this? And take the negative road. We need to look positive at the millions of dollars worth of assets in town buildings. And also, as part of it, when we redid the Russell Street School, and when we built the middle school, and we received funding from the Mass School Building Authority, part of the deal is that we need to set aside a certain percentage of funds every year for the maintenance of the buildings. This is a great tool for that. And I will turn this over to Ed in one moment, but first, I'd like to acknowledge that there was a lot of people involved in getting this done. And the ones that really did the yeoman's work would be Steve Moore from the Building Committee, Bill Cole on the Building Committee, Richard Crowley on the Building Committee, and Steve Mark for the School Department. A lot of work involved, and they did a terrific job. And at that, I'll introduce Ed Begley. Ed?
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me this evening. So I thought I'd go over kind of a big picture overview of the program, and then segue into an actual demonstration of the platform that was one of the deliverables as part of this exercise. And then we could close out with questions, and if we want to expand into the database and dig a little deeper, we can do that accordingly. So we're talking about capital planning, what are our needs, and how do we make better decisions? And so one of those steps when it comes to facilities is really sending folks in that are professionals, that understand building systems, architects and engineers. And part of that process is sitting down and meeting with staff, just like you mentioned, and talking about, well, what's the history? What are the issues at the facilities? What are the ages? And once understanding the background and some of the things about the respective facilities, deploying architects and engineers to each of the facilities to go out and walk through them, meet with staff, and evaluate all the building systems, and try to help understand how those various building systems are operating, where they're at in their life cycle, and what a planning level estimate would be to replace that respective building systems, and how much that might cost. And packaging that all up into reports, we delivered a narrative-style report that everybody can look through. Well, those are great, but ultimately, those end up on shelves. And so we feel, as a company who does this for a living, that the best exercise is to provide a database, something that we can use over time to query information, not just looking at one particular asset in a report, but a collection of assets. And that might be the schools, independent from the town's infrastructure, or some of the town's infrastructure, independent from the schools, right? Or as an aggregate, as a whole, all of our infrastructure, what are our needs? What should we be planning? What should we be budgeting for? And it might be budgeting as a whole, or budgeting by building system. How much do we need to budget for resurfacing parking lots? Or replacing roofs? Or replacing boilers, et cetera, et cetera? And so we've completed that. So we've sent in folks, evaluated each of the facilities independently, packaged this database into a tool that we think will help you make better decisions as far as capital planning. There's always more needs than there are money, and so we recognize that. But it's providing you a tool that you can visualize everything as a whole and query information quickly to make better decisions. So with that, I'm going to jump into the platform. So if everybody can look at the screen. So this is a web-based platform, and so I'm on Internet Explorer right now. Any browser would work as far as accessing the data. And we've set up accounts for the staff that were identified to be able to use this platform going forward as far as capital planning. And so it's a Windows-based system, very, should be easy to understand, and it's a Windows-based platform. And so on the left, we have each of the facilities referenced here. And you can see that there's a menu across the top as far as, you know, looking at various pieces of information. So a couple of highlights that we think are useful going forward as far as understanding your systems is kind of becoming a repository for each asset. And so as part of the exercise of evaluating each of the assets, we take digital photographs of all the building components, populated those associated with the building components. We also provided a mechanism to load documents. The narrative reports that you may have seen or were passed out amongst staff, they've been loaded on the platform. But we've also provided a mechanism and ability to load other documents. Maybe you want to load your as-built drawings, roof warranties, any kind of studies that you've done on this platform. And so it's really just click and view. You can see, in this particular case, we've loaded the reports. It's a PDF, and we could load that, but in the interest of time, I'll just show you how easy it is to add other documents. It's just browsing, just like you're attaching documents to any folder on your desktop, it's attaching it to the database. And this is, like I said, once again, it's a web-based platform. The advantage of that is you can access it from anywhere, as long as you have an internet connection. So if staff has a meeting the next day, and they don't have time to go back to the office, they can log onto the data platform to evaluate the data, look at photos, look at documents, et cetera. And so, but the big part of it is, well, how do we make decisions? What is the content in the data? And so I'm going to jump up to reports and graphs. And we have a number of pre-programmed reports to make it easy to query information out of the database. I'm just going to arbitrarily select a couple and run through those with you. Replacement reserves is a standardized report that outlines... Is that a handout? Do you want to hand out? Okay, so it sounds like everybody has this as a handout. But this, you may have it as a handout for an individual building. The nice thing about this, and it's very easy to run, is we can select collections of buildings. So since we're here with the school board, let's select all the school facilities. And you can see how easy it is to select which facilities that you want to run and evaluate. So I'm checking off particular assets within the schools, so I can select them or not select them, but for this exercise, we're going to select them all. Over on the right-hand side, we're asking, what's the reserve? How far out do we want to identify the needs that we may need to consider? Well, 20 years is a long way, so we're going to select the first five years. That's fairly typical for capital planning. And we also provide a mechanism to add inflation for future costs for projects into the future. And so let's go ahead and run this. And so notice that any reports that are pre-canned are exportable to Excel for us to be able to manipulate those data points for any type of presentation that we feel is necessary. So clicking Run, and it runs the report. Takes a second to load, and here it is, right here. And so at the top is a summary table of all the particular buildings that we've selected. In this particular example, we selected all the schools. And it gives us a roll-up of our particular needs. Now, this isn't necessarily what we're going to do, this is what we should be considering to do. And so we can look into the future, what are our needs going forward for the schools, and are we planning for that type of capital? And if not, it might behoove us to consider looking at increasing capital. But this might be the starting point for making decisions on, okay, we may or may not have a half a million dollars to spend in capital, so we need to dig a little deeper inside of that half a million dollars' worth of needs, which projects we might be able to defer to in the future, and which ones we should do now. And so just as an overview with regards to the projects, so this is one of the individual schools, this is Littleton High School that we're looking at. And here are the line item activities that we've identified as far as projects that we need to do. And you have to understand that every building system has a life cycle associated with it. Industry, it's not something EMG came up with, it's industry-defined. A good example is asphalt shingles. You can go to Home Depot or Lowe's and purchase a 20-year shingle or a 30-year shingle. So when we're sending our architects and engineers in to evaluate the buildings, there's discussion with staff. When was the last time you replaced the shingles? We're having that discussion. Are there any issues, any roof leaks? Having that kind of commentary back and forth. And then there's the evaluation of the shingles themselves. Are they curling up? Is there any moisture penetration observed, et cetera, et cetera? So all of that's listed here in each of the items. You can see the first column is lifespan. That's what we're defining as the life of that various component. The middle column is E age. That's where we feel that component is at within its life. And obviously, the difference between the two is when that event should occur in the future. So if it's zero, that's something that we think we should do now. If it's two years from now, then obviously, it's in the short term. If it's 15 years from now, it's probably not something that you necessarily need to consider from capital planning. We've identified the quantity of that particular item, the unit of measure, unit cost, and then, of course, done the math for you as far as that. So this is an exercise, this would probably be the starting point as far as doing any kind of capital planning. You're running these reports to identify what are our needs. Not what we're going to do, but what are our needs to help make decisions about what our budgets should be. Well, then we come back to reality, and we say, well, regardless of what our needs are, we only have X dollars. And so we've provided other mechanisms within the database to be able to help us prioritize some of the projects. So I'm going to jump back up to reports, and I'm going to go to priorities. And this is another particular report that helps us run, you know, queries based on what's the priority of all those individual projects that we've identified. And before I actually run the report, I'm going to jump over here to manage priority framework. And we provided a mechanism for the town to prioritize based on three different categories. And we've populated two of those for you, based on our professional judgment. We left the first column the same. And so right here, you can see that the tab that's highlighted is location. So we've provided you a mechanism that you can prioritize one building over another. We totally recognize that that is a little bit sensitive, and so from our perspective, we left them all the same. But obviously, you can go in there and change those accordingly.
How much should we pay?
All right. So the next tab is based on building system. So we've gone through and prioritized each of the building systems. So if you can imagine that your roof is a higher priority than replacing carpets, right? That makes sense to everyone. But there's some, you know, that are iffy. But we've gone through there and prioritized those on a one-to-five scale, and so that when it queries the projects, it's basing it on the priority of the system, not only the priority, but also on the replacement life. So something that has no life is going to be a higher priority than something that has five years of life. However, something that has no life and is a primary building system, i.e. your building envelope, roof, windows, et cetera, it's going to prioritize that higher. Okay? All right. So with that being understood, let's jump over to the reports. I'm going to go to all reports, and I'm going to select that priority report. And we're going to, just for this exercise, I'm just going to select a few of the buildings in the interest of time. And so we'll go over here, select the tables for summary. And once again, I could export this to Excel if I wanted to manipulate it for a particular presentation. We click Run Report, loads, and you can see, based on the buildings that we've selected, it's rolled up what we're interpreting as priority one needs, priority two needs, priority three needs, et cetera. And then for each of the line items that's in the summary, we have an individual table that identifies what those projects are. And you can see over to the right, the priority one projects are listed first, priority two, et cetera, et cetera. And so this gives us an idea where we can start looking at our budgets and making decisions to say, okay, we don't have enough money to do all our needs, but it looks like we have enough money to do our priority one needs and our priority two needs. And then you can start chipping away at these items, right? And so, but what's nice about the database versus the individual reports that I mentioned earlier, that are static, is you can go back and look at the data. There might be particular items. So for example, here's an item at the Houghton Memorial Building, ADA accessibility. So this is an accessibility issue item, it's a priority one. Let's click on the ID and see what that's talking about, and show a picture of that particular activity. So I mentioned earlier, for every component that we took, we took a digital photograph, it's assigned to that activity, and we can visually look at that without having to go out into the field or in that building. So in the settings of having discussions, you know, as a team, as a facilities team or a school board, being able to look at our needs and visualize those, not just see the data and have conversations about it. Okay? All right. So one of the neat things about this process is, well, of course, over time, we're going to do projects. We do have some money, and so we're going to apply that money. So once the decision is made to build out our capital plan and implement some of those improvements, we want to go in and tell the database that we've completed them. And so we have an exercise where, as we do projects, brings up an entry, okay, we've decided to do this project, and when did we do it? Select a date. And what was the actual cost of that project? Maybe it was $1,000 instead of $887. Comments, maybe the contractor, the work order. And it saves that, and it keeps track of that. And so very quickly, without having to shuffle through 19 different spreadsheets and reports and aggregate that data for presentations, as long as you're keeping the database up to date, you can spit out, you know, work-completed reports very quickly on an individual building or a collection of buildings. So if some of the constituents may be upset that they feel like they're not getting the attention at a particular building, we can run the report and say, well, actually, in the past three years, we have spent $150,000 on X, Y, and Z. And so that's kind of helpful as far as keeping track of your assets, right? All right. So, and what's slick about it is, if there are projects that are recurring, remember, in our analysis that we looked at, we didn't just look at five years, we looked at 20 years. And so there are projects and activities, building system and components, that will need to be replaced multiple times over that term. And so anytime that we do an actual project, and we populate it in the database with its costs, that cost is recorded, and for planning purposes, it uses that actual cost versus the planning estimate that we came up with. So as you go forward, as you're entering data, it should be more accurate over time to reflect actual costs spent in the future. Okay? All right. So a couple other things that I think are useful, separate from all this content and data that we've captured. We do have a cost library that's embedded with the database that our company updates yearly. And so we all need to understand what costs are, right? What it costs to do projects. So there is a very basic mechanism in here to search particular costs. So I'm going to just do an example. And so in this particular case, I'm going to search on asphalt, A-S-P-H, if I spell right, right? Asphalt. And notice, I'm going to leave it as asphalt, and I'm going to hit Search. And so it's going to query a library of anything in our cost library associated with asphalt. And that might be asphalt resurfacing, patches, you know, pavement patches, or it could be asphalt shingles. And so you can see here, here's a library of activity, and the source, the description of the particular activity, the lifespan of that particular activity that I mentioned previously, and then the unit cost for that activity, and the source material. So in this case, it's RS Means, which is a standard industry source material for cost estimating. Most professionals tend to use that. There's a few others, but that's the predominant one. And so it does provide you a tool and a platform as you're considering projects or you're getting bids in to be able to, okay, is this bid that we received in the ballpark, or am I getting taken advantage of? And should I consider rebidding? So it does provide that mechanism as well. All right. So in closing out, I'm going to show you one other particular aspect of the tool, and then I'm going to open it up to questions. All right. So I'm back to the home screen where it lists the particular assets. Notice here, this is a Google Earth link. You don't have that many assets that it's that helpful, but it is fairly slick that if you're having a conversation within the context of meeting, and you don't have time to go out there, you can click on the building and have a discussion, you know, about that particular asset. And zoom in, and I don't need to spend a lot of time on this, everybody's seen Google Earth, and be able to, just like the photos, looking at all the photo documentation, but looking at a satellite view overhead, having a conversation, or looking at reports, all from the office here together as a team versus going out and deploying in the field. All right. So one more thing. So looking at this, we do have amongst the photos, the documents, the work screen is the mechanism to edit and add data as you go forward. You mentioned you have some other facilities. You do have the ability to do that yourself, add additional assets to the database, and populate those, or of course, you could contract with us to help you with that. But I'm going to select on, you know, the overview. And so another interesting little tab as far as, you know, providing summary data. And this is just kind of a quick shot overview on where this building is at, what are our primary needs, areas of need, and overall, how are we looking into the future? So in this particular exercise, we've added a component that's called Facility Condition Index. Facility Condition Index is an industry-established metric for you to be able to compare one asset to another, or assets to its peer groups. And it's a very simple calculation. It's your short-term capital needs, capital needs being roof replacements, carpet replacements, window replacements, et cetera, divided by the replacement value of that building. So if we think of in the context of a car, we have a car, and our engine's blown, and our transmission's a little shoddy, and we need new tires, maybe that's $15,000, half the value of a $30,000 car. Well, do we fix the car, or do we replace the car? You can do either, and it's a function of resources available to you. But it should give you perspective on thinking about, should we make that investment into that building, or should we consider getting a new asset? Right? And so it's just a tool to look at where we're at going forward. So this simple graph showing the years across the bottom. Here is our FCI score. Point one is the threshold between good and fair. Anything higher than that, you're going into the poor range. And so the yellow line is establishing a threshold saying, we want to maintain point one, kind of that threshold between fair and poor. We don't want to ever go any worse than that. And so based on that, it gives us an idea, the green bars are how much money we will have to invest in that property, and when we have to invest that in order to maintain that threshold. So in this particular exercise, right here, we're looking at the most significant investment required in 2021 of, if we're looking at the graph, 80,000 plus. Okay. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions. It's kind of a big-picture overview. Go ahead.
Can we ask first, or?
And I'm not a building guy, but I am a homeowner and I know that preventive maintenance can often defer, you know.
That's correct. That's correct. So this is a capital planning tool, and we talk to some of those preventive maintenance activities within the reports. But in the context of the database, we separate capital investment from, from operating and maintenance. And so that's not something that we necessarily include in as a cost within the database.
But I guess I'm just going to, is that many assets, if you neglect the maintenance, you'll have to replace them sooner. Not saying that here in Littleton, we ever defer maintenance. But, but that's, that's, I think, a key factor.
That's correct. That's correct. The context of these, the data points that are populated are under the presumption that you are going to operate all standard operating procedures for doing maintenance. So from a pavement standpoint, that you are going to consider seal coating every five years or, you know, replacing filters in furnaces, et cetera.
Is there a way to adjust the model based on the reality that I don't think we do that in most cases?
There are mechanisms to alter the data and, and pull projects forward. I guess I would encourage you to revisit maintenance because your, your initial point is correct. If you do do preventative maintenance aspects, then you will extend the life of your components and it will provide you the mechanism in some cases. So we talked about life cycles earlier. Industry established life cycles for roof shingles. That's just an industry average. So we, we say twenty years, it could be eighteen or it could be twenty-two, right? Same thing with any other building system.
I guess I'm just wondering, because my profession is software, that an interesting feature might be to say, if I allocate, you know, X extra dollars towards preventive maintenance, I might get Y extra life, which might affect.
You could do that, but it varies significantly based on the building system. There's some building systems that don't require a lot of preventive maintenance. There are others that are impacted greatly by it. It's definitely something to consider.
Okay. I just know that as we're trying to allocate, you know, do the triage of dollars, you know, some will, I think, legitimately say, well, gosh, maybe we should have been spending more on preventive maintenance and maybe that's where our money should go. And I just want, just wonder.
I would say the answer to that is yes, without even thinking about it. You should do that.
Okay. There you go. All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Alex.
Yeah. This is the second time I've seen it, and I swear I'd watch it a third time. But now that we've got it on TV, I guess, I guess we can do that at home. But thank you for this. It was very informative.
All right. Great.
I guess one thing I want to sort of ask and then ask that everyone here sort of think about, maybe we discuss it tonight, maybe it's at a later date. But now that we have this database, we need to maintain it. And figuring out how we want to do that in terms of staffing, are there existing people we want to have, we want to, you know, direct to maintain this database? Is it something every department will do or every building will do independently? I don't know if you want to bring, if you want to open that up tonight or if we want to.
Finish asking me a question.
Sure.
We're going to ask the PMBC.
Sure.
Where we may be with the Board of Selectmen and Facilities Managers, as an example.
Sure.
So we've been in up here for the moment, so let's ask database questions.
Yes.
I, I.
Nobody will hear you back there. Come on up close, please, because there's no microphones.
In listening to your presentation.
And then please identify yourself so folks know.
My name's Dick Felison. I, I am working with the Superintendent's Office and the School Committee to, to move, move our school up a, a, a number of notches in terms of, of effectiveness and performance. The thing that hit me as I was listening to you talk, I kept on thinking Microsoft Project, Microsoft Project. And I'm wondering, can you integrate it? Can you come together? Can you use Microsoft Project to manage the work that you need to do?
There's opportunities for that. I don't know about specifically project. So in, as part of your question, so we're talking about a capital planning tool, and what your inquiry is, is a maintenance management system. And so there are platforms out there to actually manage projects once you've defined them within your capital plan. And we have tied this system to a number of programs. Maybe you've heard of School Dude. That's a kind of a, a work order management system for specifically for schools. I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying that in the past, we have tied this together with that. There's a number of others that are out there in the industry for traditional type facilities other than schools, and we have merged the two together.
Thank you. Kelly?
The only comment is, is this is a very worthwhile endeavor, and I'm excited about the prospects of having something that indicates shelf life of capital assets. So thank you.
Okay. Great. Steve?
There's a lot of great information out there. We just need to figure out the best way to use it.
Do we have? Betsy, go ahead, please.
I was just going to ask him about best practices, what you see, however people have used it, once you've done it. So what is the best way to structure yourself to maintain it and to best leverage it and so on?
All right. So I think, I think you're asking the right questions about, okay, now we have this, this tool. And that's what it is.
Right.
It's a tool. It's one of many tools that you should be using to manage your assets. It's just organizing all the content in one place to make it easier to, to look at the data, right? And so you definitely do need to assign a manager, somebody that's ultimately responsible for the content. Now, I, you know, be careful of having too many hands in the pot, right? Somebody should own the database, and maybe that's two people. Maybe you break it up between schools and the municipal governments, facilities, that might be fine. And, but those individuals are responsible to understanding what projects you're doing from a capital and in some cases, operating. I think there was a question about maintenance earlier. You can add, you know, those maintenance type projects in here if you feel that it's large enough to be considered a capital project. But populating those projects and keeping it up to date. Databases, you know, it's just like anything, garbage in, garbage out. If you don't manage it and keep it up to date, then very quickly, the content that we populated in here will become stale. So you can imagine next year, you know, I would suspect that there's even projects that you have completed since we performed our assessments. And they may or may not have been, the database has been told that those have been done. So you can imagine that next year, when you're starting, or this year, when you're starting to look at and forecasting, okay, well, what are our needs, right? Let's query, run that reserve report that I mentioned. We query our needs. We look at those numbers. Ah, those are scary. Then maybe jump to the priorities report, running that and looking at, say, and picking off pieces that you feel like you can handle. But then separately, looking at it and recognizing, okay, we, we can't keep this up. We may want to look at that FCI graph that I was talking about. And then there's other mechanisms, if I had more time, to show you other reports where you can run those. But looking at that and say, we've got some trouble. In three years, our, our costs are going to triple, right? The, the needs that we have. And if we don't increase our capital budget, or, and this is very sensitive, looking at reducing our asset inventory, right? That's also a consideration that you have to make. If you're going to increase your, your assets, you need to increase your operating capital, operators. Just adding a new building, like this building, right? This brand-new building, it's great, doesn't really have a lot of needs, but it will have needs in the future, in the near term. So you need to plan for those and look at that as a whole, right? So I don't know if that's kind of a little bit all over the place, but hopefully that came close to answering your question.
And that person that normally maintains the database, is it just like an administrator or is it somebody who knows building? And that's kind of what I'm.
It doesn't have to be an engineer and architect, but it needs to be somebody that has, that's savvy about understanding that there's a difference between a roof and carpet, right? So, you know, I have clients who have administrative staff that are responsible for coordinating. So they're going to the project managers that are managing the roof project or managing the boiler replacement or the window replacement, et cetera. They're collecting that information and then they're populating the database. So you can have an administrative person to do it, but they need to be a little bit savvy and understand, you know, building systems a little bit.
Okay. And so we have the Houghton Building, the four school buildings, police, no, you didn't put the police in here.
Yes.
It is police, okay. And town offices.
Right.
Along with the library. That's the scope and associated grounds with that. In the initial compilation of what you've done here, about how many man-hours did that take, please?
Oh, boy. You're catching me off guard. I'd have to go back and look at that. I don't, I don't remember.
And that's, that's invested already, but now to maintain that database, on average, because I know things, you know.
Right.
Those facilities, about how many man-hours do you think we require?
My recommendation is, is that you, at a minimum, update this database twice yearly, right? I don't necessarily think, especially with the number of assets that you have, it's something that you have to do quarterly, although that's something that you can consider. I think twice a year, as long as your project managers or whomever, I'm not sure how you manage your capital projects, but as those, you, you're keeping good data, right, on those projects that were completed. What, what that project cost and what was the scope of that project, so you can associate that to the line items that are in the database. And I would say twice a year, a staff going in and updating that data, and then that's, that's kept it up to date. And then there's, the subsequent exercise to that is, you know, using the data, right? There's lots of features associated with the pa, the platform that are helpful for capital planning, but also just information purposes as you're keeping track of these assets over time.
Based on our asset base, if we did it twice a year, each effort during, you know, those two efforts, how many man-hours would you think is that? Is that a half a week, a week?
Yeah. That's, that's probably, I would say, realistic. I have clients where they hire me to do that service for them. So I send one of my architects in and they go twice a year and update their content. And then I have clients that I, you know, who have, for example, Arlington County Government. It's a large county, suburban Washington DC. It's one of my clients. Laundry list of buildings, a couple million square feet, several million square feet of buildings. And so we're, we're doing it a little bit more regularly, quarterly, right? And I've found that that's a little too often, to be perfectly honest. So it's somewhere between quarterly and half yearly, maybe three times a year versus twice a year in that particular case. I think in your case, twice a year. And I think once a year, you might get lost on, gosh, remembering, well, what did we do? But if you, if six months old, usually everybody can remember, you know, the type of projects that we're talking about. But I would say that your estimates is pretty close. Weak or less?
If nobody else has questions, Ed, I'd like to use it as a segue to get Jeff back up and ask Jeff a couple of questions from the town perspective. And first off, anybody?
I just have one more that I'm not sure who it's to. Any estimate on what it would take to get the rest of the large town assets under, under?
I'm not familiar with them, so I don't.
So maybe that's a question for these guys.
You know, we have to see the list. I know we've talked about a few of them occasionally. I, I think, and to be perfectly honest, I don't even remember what our services were for the town. I'd have to go back and look at my records. But I think you find that based on what you're receiving and the cost, hopefully you're pleased with what you paid for the service and what you've got in return. And incrementally, you've already, you know, we've already had the content set up. It's just, it, it's not that larger reach to go capture a few more buildings.
Yeah. I mean, I'm thinking highway, fire as a whole.
Yeah.
Genoire.
Any more questions? Direct to Ed.
If I could just comment on Brian's mentioning the, for instance, the highway. We had initially included the highway department in on this, but the highway department building where it's connected to effectively with the light department service indicated that for now, they would stick to taking care of their own facility, which in one respect is fine. It's one less thing for us to do when they seem to do a bad job at it. But we did talk about including the fire station, you know, and other buildings that we do have in town, but because of cost constraints on the cost, we stuck with what we felt we could afford to get this far.
Sure.
It's a stepping stone. We chose the route we did feeling that we could get the biggest bang for our buck. We can look at maintenance from all different avenues on it. There's a lot of things we can look at, but overall, I think we got what we were, we were looking for at a cost that we put forward and that was given to us to work with.
And I think it's appendable. You can always, you can always append to it. And next year, if you make the decision to add those assets, you know, we, of course, we're, we're in business, so we, we entertain whatever you would like us to do. I would encourage you, whether we do it or you do it, if you think about it, want to know what all your assets are costing you as a whole. And so having only a piece of that pie in the context can sometimes skew your idea about what you're actually, your true needs are. And so I would say that it is helpful to have all your assets in one platform as a whole to, to be looking at them when you're making decisions.
So while we all have responsibilities in the side of departments for the facilities and the real property entrusted to us, is the PMBC, you know, there's an overarching responsibility for all the town property also. So with that, have you all developed a vision yet on how you want to go forward, what you're going to recommend to the various boards in town as to how we approach this synergistically, you know, as an entire town?
No.
Is that?
Don't we expand on that?
But we will.
Is that something you see on your plate or the selectman's plate as far as from an over town overarching perspective?
I guess the way, why I look at it is that we, we go out and research whatever it is that we're asked to do. And I don't feel it's the position of the building committee to make decisions on these.
No, that's the recommendation, not decision.
So that we feel that the Board of Selectmen are the ones that put us on this path, and we're going to give them all the information. I can remember one night at a Board of Selectmen's meeting, one of the selectmen decided, made the statement, you know, we're looking for, heading for something to do with the facilities manager.
Thank you. Because I was going to ask you.
That's not, that's not the case. And we've avoided that because there are a lot of alternatives to it. Facilities manager is one. You could outsource it to a company, perhaps they could handle it. And in this case here, it could be EMG. We could maybe go in on it with another town, a surrounding town, Air Grotten, whoever, maybe you're in the same situation as us. There's a lot of different avenues on that. So our suggestion is for the selectmen to work with the school department because you know, you have a large inventory, probably the largest inventory of buildings in town. Work with them, work with the finance committee. We'll certainly partake on it, but the ultimate decision is to those that get the big bucks.
Yeah. And our paycheck's about the same, isn't it, right now? So we're all getting the big bucks. All right. I hear what you're saying. Between you all and then for the FinCom reps, this is probably something we really need to sit down with the Board of Selectmen and, you know, chart a course for the town. At first, I felt great, Ed. Certainly it's great information. And, you know, and this is not a quality cut on your product, because it's a very good product. But a mediocre plan executed well is better than the brilliant plan not executed at all. So the thing is, we got to set sail, so to speak. And you've helped us a lot to know where we are right now. And I know Facilities Manager, I was going to ask you about that because it's been a tennis match, you know, which side of the net is it on today?
Felt obligated to.
What's that?
He felt obligated to.
Yeah, I did, yeah. And he felt obligated to lead even with it.
I think there's a couple of reports that you can run very easily out of the database, you know, all the buildings together and maybe the schools separated from all the buildings, right? And present that to the selectmen. And maybe the priority report and the replacement reserve need, right? Maybe for the first five years. And you can look at that. And that's probably a good starting point to make decisions on, are we funded enough? Are we not funded enough? And where, you know, where should we start going into the future?
And that's where we have to have the discipline. Surely a town's exercised great discipline, like with the post, the employment benefits as an example. There's a bill that needs to be paid, this is a bill that needs to be paid. I mentioned a couple of other examples. So, all right, let's stop there. This is excellent. Thank you. Anybody else for anything?
Just, Mr. Chairman, one comment. With FinCom, I mean, we've had some discussions with the Board of Selectmen and others about the whole issue of maintenance in that we see, you know, items on the capital budget that are sometimes capital, sometimes you can think of them as maintenance. We've also seen a lot, but not all of the departments tend to have a ten thousand dollar line item for, for general maintenance. And we've, we've talked about, do we want to mush that together? And we've, we've talked about, do we want to mush that together? Do we want to have some sort of unified maintenance? Because when we've talked to the various departments, it seems very hit or miss, very scattered. We don't have a unified approach to maintenance, you know, of our buildings. I mean, we've talked about, you know, you know, vehicle maintenance and consolidating that. So it's a topic that's been floating around. So, I mean, yes, we need to have more conversations, but we have started to have the conversation, but it's a big ball of wax to get your hands around.
This is a topic going on for years. I've been on the building committee for, I think, eight years now. And my first year on it was, it came up, facilities maintenance issue. And it comes up periodically. And for eight years, it's just been talked about, and this is our first full effort to do something. And now we're putting it on the table, you know, we're laying the foundation for it. We'll work with anybody that wants to have us work with them, but, you know, the ball is going to be in court again of those that make the decisions. But it's a start. That's where it is. It's the best start we've had.
It's traction finally, so well done on yours part, you know, working with Ed and the rest of the folks in town to bring this up to us. All right, let's see. Look at the FinCom. Sometime over the, you know, maybe after Christmas for sure, in January, because we're short weeks now. Let's work with Keith Bergman and the board of selectmen, and let's get the three of us all together. And if you, and it's up to you all and the board of selectmen too, if you want to pull police in and whatever. But the unified approach of some sort, whether it's a single manager in the town, whether it's some of the various alternatives you mentioned, they all sound certainly plausible, depending on circumstance and the surrounding towns in the light. We already unionize in some ways with supplies, for example, with other districts in trying to, you know, bulk buy in some things as an example. So this may become one of those things that category, you know, bulk buy where various towns get together. You know, police have been talking about, you know, combined dispatch as an example, you know, to help with savings of manpower costs. And I guess I would ask the board, ask you, maybe the PMBC, to at least consider teeing up some of those alternatives, perhaps checking around with some of the other towns. And obviously, I'm not a taxing authority for you all, I'm just asking you to consider, please. And so that when we have that meeting, it may be constructive to have some of those, rather than just suggestions, some viable alternatives with cost and consequences associated with them. Your all's call on that, but that's what I ask you to consider, please. Go ahead, say it aloud, Steve.
Well, the other thing, Paul, I think it's important to also start the discussion about how we're going to put funding for these long-term projects, because I know we can run a report with the schools isolated separately, but we're not a taxing authority to.
Well, that's a thing, this is going to get announced to the selectmen or the finance office and the town administrator to look at. I personally think that we're probably going to maintain this database on the town side. That's where all the money's going to come from, in coordination with prioritizing school building issues with the school committee. So now it needs to go to the selectmen, we need to get involved, and the finance department of town needs to get involved, and that's the first steps we need to take. Because the next thing is, where's the money going to come from? And then start prioritizing.
Now, you say that I was right, it always comes back to that one question, where's the money going to come from?
Well, that's always an issue.
And that's the issue, and I just sticking by, you know.
Now, what you do with this will help us prioritize.
What we invested with the highway department, look at that as the, you know, foundation. It does come back to that, there's no question about it.
Yeah, well, you know, we're, we're looking at a good chunk of money that we're going to spend in capital projects this year.
Yep.
We've got this report now, we're not going to town meeting until May, maybe some of that will change. Maybe some of this will get done, still something else that we were thinking about. Or maybe like we did with the, with the road project, as you mentioned, that we go out with a borrowing, and we put together a yearly chopper this thing. There's three or four ways to go about it. But first, let's, let's get the report in the hands of people who ordered it, and let's talk with them. Then we'll go from there.
In closing, what access do we have to this right now? You know, will we be in the various committees?
Steve will tell you all about that.
Okay.
Well, you have access, don't you, Steve?
Not yet.
Oh, you don't?
I have access to the initial reports at this point in time.
Okay. Well, a number of us have live access. I think you do, Bill. You, Carl?
Yeah.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, Bill, please.
As far as selling this for funding, to me, it is extremely simple. You either pay now or you pay later. It's up to the town. Ed told us right from the get-go that this is not designed for maintenance, general maintenance. It's going to be up to the town to do general maintenance, and that will increase the usable life of the equipment. And, you know, from a trickle-down effect, as far as I'm concerned, that's where it's got to start. Funding has to start with everyday maintenance, and then it'll help keep down the costs that the capital's spending. But if you don't do that, and you end up doing, making capital expenditures when you haven't planned for them, you're going to end up paying more for it, because things are going to be getting replaced under the gun, and you're never in a position to get a good price on something when it's being done that way. I mean, to me, it's just a good common sense plan. And as a taxpayer, I have an opinion, and I think there's money being spent in other areas that would be much better funding this.
I'm going to be open to those. I mean, you don't have to present this evening, but certainly if you have ideas where you think we could be doing something better in the school department, please.
Oh, I wasn't, don't get me wrong, I wasn't talking about the school town.
No, but I can't speak to.
I was talking about the town as a whole.
I can't speak to the other departments, just for us. If you have some of those thoughts, please share them with us. You know, we may disagree in all candor because of the way we prioritize, but certainly listen to your thoughts for sure.
So, sorry. So are we, as a town, in a position where, I mean, we're at a good point in the cycle for this to happen? I mean, I'd love to, if it's possible for us to see, you know, all the capital requests that come in, you know, come in to be voted on in May, you know, perhaps be done, you know, within this framework? And perhaps, you know, perhaps all departments get asked, where are you on, on, on maintenance? You know? I mean, if this was, you know, April, it'd be tough. It'd be tough, but, because there wouldn't be time. But now there is time, maybe we can, you know, all sort of agree to fit in the framework.
Thank you. Okay, we're just about coming up on seven, so we're looking pretty good. Ed, anything to close with?
No, I think you're on track with what you just mentioned, and, you know, there's, what we've done here doesn't have to be definitive, it's our professional judgment, there are things that are going to come up. But you asked your, your department, your folks that are in these buildings on a day-to-day basis, what do you want to do? And then you compare it to what we've put together and help use that as a buffer to make better decisions. Well, our consultant said that we should replace this roof, and we feel that that's warranted, so we're going to do the roof in lieu of doing the playground or whatever that might be.
Okay, thanks very much. Appreciate it greatly. And I'd like to thank the PMBC, the FinCom for coming this evening, and extended invitation for you to remain for the rest of it, so you'll see how we'll be spending money in the school department this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Lock the doors so they can't. We'll have an audience.
Okay, we will take the five-minute recess, because the way we did the agenda, seven o'clock, being interested citizens, so five-minute recess, folks.
You have ideas for places we should be spending differently? We're always open to pick up here. I think you all are, but I am, I want to hear it. With the caveat again that we may disagree, but.
So at some point, you know, we make our, our list, which includes the facility pieces in, or educational pieces, and we're trading them off, should they be traded off, should all the upgrades be traded off to the town level versus within the local budget level? Because like, we made a decision to bump one of the rooms, you know.
Right. You had your primary, yeah.
Right, no, but I mean, should that be, should that be done here? You know, for, you know, the 17,000 we needed for something else, you know, it's a different part of the discussion about how you budget and plan facility versus just your operating capital needs.
The Senate agenda, minutes from November 14th, 2013, and House Pay Bills and Payroll, your motion?
I have something here.
Go ahead.
First, line 124, when we're looking at the, let me just pull it up, it's the third page of minutes there. When we look at the common case, it says, number three, Common Core State Standards and Superintendent Review Curriculum Update Costs. Daryl made a point that some of these costs, not all of them, but some of these costs would be paid for anyway.
Yeah.
If you could just indicate that in the minutes.
Incurred, I think that's the word, would occur the cost anyway.
Yes, yes. If we could just make it, Daryl pointed out, some of these costs would have been incurred anyway.
All right, so following that second, well, Common Course Date Standards and the Superintendent Review, that sentence after that?
Yeah, Daryl.
A portion of these costs would have been incurred?
Yes, Daryl pointed out, yeah.
Sound good?
Yeah.
And then in the park discussion, if you're ready to, in the park discussion, actually had a rather lengthy discussion as to how we should communicate with the commissioner and our elected officials. We said that we would draft a letter to the commissioner, like that added there too, please.
At the very end?
Yes, please. Is that okay, folks?
Yeah.
And I did send that drafty today, apologize, I only got it to you today. I've been in Missouri the last few days, Show Me State. Pretty nice out there, Kansas City area.
Pretty warm.
It was nice, it really was. It was cold previously, but this, this week wasn't bad, so. And we'll talk more about that later on. Folks, anything else on the minutes, folks? All right, take a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes, consent agenda as amended.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Those favor?
I, I.
Those unanimous? Thank you. Okay, interested citizens, anybody? All right, we're going to have a pursuit of excellence task force update here in a few moments. Our main brief was held up because of traffic, so we're just going to hold a couple of minutes as far as that goes. And I'd like to see, can we jump ahead and, to pretend Kelly Clancy, and have Chloe give her updates, student update? Is that okay, folks?
Sure.
Is that okay, Chloe?
Yeah.
And if you finish that, you can go home early if you want. No, you're going to stick, kid, you're hanging tonight with this kid.
I am? Oh, boy, okay. So for the school report, the middle and high school play, winter play, Shrek, is a musical, and that's going to be in two weekends, so Friday, December 6th, and Saturday and Sunday. And tickets will be available at the door, or you can buy them online. So the high school football team are the district champions, and they will be playing their next game at Westfield State, that's 11:00 AM on Saturday. At the high school this week, there was a couple of different clubs put together the Great American Smokeout, and a lot of people signed petitions saying that they would not smoke cigarettes, so that was, that was good. Next Tuesday, from 6:00 to 8:00, there will be the Powderpuff Football Game at Alumni Field, juniors versus seniors. And then there's the Thanksgiving Football Game, which I think is called the Route 2 Bowl, is that correct? Because it's against Air Shirley Regional High School, that's at 9:00 AM.
That'd be the Route 2A Bowl.
Route 2A Bowl, yeah. And then.
You made the PMBC come up, but I think you need to make the task force.
The task force should set up. This evening, Roland Gibson is going to give us an update on the Pursuit of Excellence Task Force. Every call last year, we appointed the task force to see what they could do to help improve the schools and the performance of the students as we move forward in the next four to five years or so. And this evening, Roland's going to give us an update as to where the task force is and see where we're headed. All yours, Roland.
Oh, yeah. So what language are you going to code in?
How, how is it? Coming here as you're going to say?
No, no. It's code.
Too trendy, dude.
No, I'm curious.
I'm not sure what they're going to use for coding. We have a few weeks to determine exactly what we're going to do.
Roland, you're going to present from the podium?
You want me to?
That way folks can see you.
Can hear you. Well, I can move you.
Right, because of the mic.
I think Lisa's a coding resource.
I gave up on podiums a long time ago, but that's okay. I'd like to thank the school committee for being flexible. I needed, I needed that. So I will miss recess for the next week. The school committee requested the task force basically provide three things: status update and a progress report, what activities we had planned, a proposed schedule, and if we had a request for resources. But one procedural matter, do you want to ask questions as I go along, or do you want to wait till the end?
No, I'd like, at least I would like to let you hear the whole briefing.
Okay.
Because sometimes you answer the questions we may have as you go through the briefing. So if you're all okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to commend the school committee for initiating this process to explore where we need to be in 2020. Just this afternoon, I attended a Skilled Yap Expo in Norwood. So what we're doing has a great deal of relevance. I'd like to thank all the members of the task force. There are several people that are here this evening, especially the steering committee for their tireless, their faithful, and their hard work. The notes that you have suggest that we had 20 meetings, or actually, we had more than 20 meetings. That does not count, that does not include the subcommittee meetings, which gives you some idea, maybe in some ways, we would like the school committee. It seems as though this has been our life. I'd like to thank Superintendent Clancy for the valuable publications that he shared with us early on. They have been a very useful part of our education. This was, was an enormous undertaking. I spoke with people at one of nearby universities, and they had some, some things to say that I will not share with, in the public forum. We had basically two options to approach this. We could take shortcuts, or we could do it right. Our approach has been to focus on 2020, not on current district issues or current planning. There were two ground, well, we had several ground rules, but the two that I'm sharing with you is the first one, we approach on the future, not the present. The second was that the process should be inclusive. And by definition, that meant it's labor-intensive and time-consuming. There were two essential questions that we've been dealing with. Will Littleton Public School graduates be competitive with other United States of America high school graduates in 2020? Other essential question is, how will the school committee know that the graduates are competitive? A little bit of history. The task force was formed in October of 2012. There were approximately 22 volunteers that signed on. From October to December, we had organizational and clarification meetings. It became evident early on that scheduling meetings with 22 people wasn't going to work. So we restructured in early 2013. Teachers were represented initially. They later withdrew. Administrators were represented initially, and following the restructure, they had been available on request. The task force embarked on a process to better understand complex educational issues. Most of the people in the room were non-educators, so that made a lot of sense to begin there. In December 2012, the school committee chair, the superintendent, and the task force facilitator held clarification meetings. As a result of that meeting, in January 2013, the superintendent provided several questions to help us better understand what we were doing and what 2020 was all about. It really helped us focus, and I'd like to share those questions. What skill sets do our students need to be college and career and life-ready? What should our schools look like in 10 years? For example, programming, partnerships, et cetera. What are other high-performing school districts within the nation currently doing that separates them from other school districts? How are they visioning towards the future? What do Littleton residents want for their children, in particular, skill sets, attitudes, et cetera, that they feel are important for student success beyond high school? And you're going to hear a lot about beyond high school because there was a time when school systems were responsible to see them across the platform, and that was the end of the game, was the school system. Not anymore. What advice do recent graduates, within the last five years, have for all of us? How well do they feel the school district prepared them for the journey that they have taken? The data suggests that a lot of students, not only Littleton, but nationwide, are graduating from college and they're unemployed. A significant number are not graduating from college. And we're in the process of trying to find out what happens with our students once they cross the podium. And then last but not least, what fiscal limitations, if any, do the recommendations have on the school district budget? In February, we clarified our charge. The task force continued to educate itself, did a fair amount of research on the history and purpose of education. And the purpose of education now is very different from what it was 50 years ago when I graduated, 60 years ago when I graduated from high school. And I would suggest it's very different now than it was 20 years ago. The task force, this will work with pre-ed reform, and I use 1993 because that's when the Massachusetts ed reform law was passed. What approaches and what models were appropriate pre-1993? What approaches and models and beliefs, I should include beliefs, were appropriate post-ed reform? Because the belief system prior to ed reform is very different than it is after ed reform. One of our significant findings included the characteristics of high-achieving schools. Substantial amount of research has been done. Some of the language is different on various studies, but they, they all end up pretty much similar. And I've shared with the committee and the audience a half a dozen or so of these characteristics. Number one, high-achieving school districts are clear about their vision, and they have a shared focus. They're clear about what they want students to know and be able to do by the end of a particular grade. They're clear about how to assess whether or not students can do it, and they're clear about what they're going to do when students don't know and are not able to do what they're expected to do. High-achieving schools have effective leadership at the district level and in schools. They have high standards and expectations for all students. The principal and teachers see problems as solvable. And that's very different from pre-ed reform when people solve problems, what the school's responsibility, responsibility with some, for somebody else. High-achieving schools embrace the notion of frequent monitoring of what students are learning and what and how teachers are teaching. Teachers teach and reflect, teach and reflect. Are kids getting it? How are they getting, what kids aren't getting it? How can I make it better? High-achieving schools create a climate and a culture that supports teaching, a teaching and learning environment that is created, as opposed to an environment that is mandated. We call that a performance environment, and there's a lot of research that's been done with that, not necessarily for this form. But the principals are well acquainted with what happens when the culture of the school focuses on learning, and what happens when they focus on performance. Kids end up in different places. And last but not least, high-achieving schools have high levels of family and inclusive community involvement.
You missed one.
I missed one?
Professional development.
Thank you. I need all the help I can get. Another characteristic of high-achieving schools is professional development. It's data-driven, and it's focused. Thank you, Lisa. From March to November of this year, we've been, we continue to clarify our task. We're trying to create more effective ways to approach the task and gather data. Early in the spring, the steering committee evolved. The task force was restructured, and steering committee leadership supports the committee as a whole. We've had no fewer than 20 meetings, including retreats, special presentations, workshops, and interviews. We've done visits to high-achieving districts. We've interviewed some people out of state. In July of 2013, the facilitators, the school committee rep, met with the superintendent. Some of the activities that we have planned. A significant number are not graduating from college. And we're in the process of trying to find out what happens with our students once they cross the podium. And then last but not least, what fiscal limitations, if any, do the recommendations have on the school district budget? In February, we clarified our charge. The task force continued to educate itself, did a fair amount of research on the history and purpose of education. And the purpose of education now is very different from what it was 50 years ago when I graduated, 60 years ago when I graduated from high school. And I would suggest it's very different now than it was 20 years ago. The task force, this some work with pre-ed reform, and I use 1993 because that's when the Massachusetts ed reform law was passed. What approaches and what models were appropriate pre-1993? What approaches and models and beliefs, I should include beliefs, were appropriate post-ed reform? Because the belief system prior to ed reform is very different than it is after ed reform. One of our significant findings included the characteristics of high achieving schools. Substantial amount of research has been done. Some of the language is different on various studies, but they all end up pretty much similar. And I've shared with the committee and the audience a half a dozen or so of these characteristics. Number one, high achieving school districts are clear about their vision and they have a shared focus. They're clear about what they want students to know and be able to do by the end of a particular grade. They're clear about how to assess whether or not students can do it. And they're clear about what they're going to do when students don't know and are not able to do what they're expected to do. High achieving schools have effective leadership at the district level and in schools. They have high standards and expectations for all students. The principal and teachers see problems as solvable. And that's very different from pre-ed reform when people solve problems, what the school's responsibility, responsibility for somebody else. High achieving schools embrace the notion of frequent monitoring of what students are learning and what and how teachers are teaching. Teachers teach and reflect, teach and reflect. Are kids getting it? How are they getting, what kids aren't getting it? How can I make it better? High achieving schools create a climate and a culture that supports teaching, a teaching and learning environment that is created as opposed to an environment that is mandated. We call that a performance environment, and there's a lot of research that's been done with that, not necessarily for this forum, but the principals are well acquainted with what happens when the culture of the school focuses on learning? And what happens when they focus on performance? The kids end up in a different place. And last but not least, high achieving schools have high levels of family and inclusive community involvement.
You missed one.
I missed one?
Professional development.
Thank you. I need all the help I can get. Another characteristic of high achieving schools is professional development. It's data driven and it's focused. Thank you, Lisa. From March to November of this year, we've been, we continue to clarify our task. We're trying to create more effective ways to approach the task and gather data. Early in the spring, the steering committee evolved. The task force was restructured, and steering committee leadership supports the committee as a whole. We've had no fewer than 20 meetings, including retreats, special presentations, workshops, and interviews. We've done visits to high achieving districts. We've interviewed some people out of state. In July of 2013, the facilitators, the school committee rep met with the superintendent. Some of the activities that we have planned. We intend to engage stakeholders, parents, high school students, current and recent graduates, teachers, administrators, local business leaders, senior citizens, local higher ed institutions, educational consulting organizations, town governance agencies, including the Board of Selectment and FinCom. We intend to be done by that, with those interviews, that piece of work, by the end of January. We will continue researching high achieving districts and districts that are planning for 2020. We intend to be done with that work by the end of January. As we go along, we will compile and analyze the data. We will draft the final report by the end of February, and we will submit the draft to the superintendent for his review. It is our hope that we will be, have a final report by April 3rd. And we will present, I don't know what your schedule is, but we would expect to present in early April to the school committee. We do not have any resources to request at this time, but we reserve the right to request resources down the road. Let the record show.
Do it.
Do it, thank you. We are now, myself or a member of the task force can speak to your questions.
I just want to, want to really commend everyone for all the work that they have done. This is a massive undertaking. Everyone has put in a lot of hours into this. And for most of us, it's not our field. But I think the unsung hero of all this is Roland, who I know has been working around the clock pretty much since we started and probably for 10 years before that, to try to make our schools as best they can be.
Well, and Alex, I called him at 1:00 the other morning, and he wouldn't take my call.
He was probably already up, because if you look at, if you look at the time when I get all his emails, he's working around the clock.
He just didn't want to talk to you.
That's probably true.
It was on Zoom. And so I just want to commend Roland and everyone who's been involved in the task force, whether they're on the steering committee, whether they were involved early on and then had to step back because of other commitments. You know, life's busy. It takes a lot of time. It takes all of your time, really, if you think about it. And everyone has, who has given even a couple hours to this, to this task force has really given a lot to our schools, and so thank you.
Thanks for that, Alex. I do want to state for the record that this has been a team effort. I have been a catalyst, but the people that are doing the heavy lifting are the people that are in this room and some that are not in this room.
Thank you.
I like those, Alex's comments, and just say, I appreciate the presentation because I'm not surprised, I knew that was happening anyway, but it's nice to let you guys affirm exactly what's going on. I think it's important, you know, for everybody to understand that. And I think that with very succinct presentation, they clearly made that point.
And I'd like to thank the task force for their work going on here. I mean, it, it still seems like there's a huge road ahead there. You know, it's one thing to identify some districts, isn't it? But then to distill down, why are they high achieving? And what is the actual takeaway? So I'm really looking forward to that because I've read a lot of the material that you've sent out in different readings. And again, you see them at the high level, what, you know, you want to have discipline, you want to have data driven. Getting some insight into what the actual meaning of the implementation of that, I think would be very insightful, because I think it's easy to set the goal, you're going to do it, but you know, what exactly are they doing? What are those non tangible elements that make culture and community a critical element of that? And I don't see that being easy to always extract out of things there. And I look forward to getting a little bit more insight in terms of your interview process and the results of that would be very useful.
We don't see it as being easy either.
Okay, good. I'm not missing anything there.
You have to go visit. It's actually part of the visit.
If I could say one thing about the process, and it's really patting everybody that sits in this room on the, on the back and on the shoulder. I've done a lot of work in strategic planning and process improvement and those kinds of things. And you know, I can't tell you how many times I've handed a strategic plan to a chief executive officer. And you go back three months later, it's in the same place that it was placed when you gave it to them. And what excites me is that, is that you folks are talking about it and I think really will do something with it, which, which you were just commenting on. It does give you some approaches that you can take to try out some new things and grow, I say grow your practice like I'm talking about a doctor's office, but you know, you, you, we're finding a lot of things about, about what good education is, and I thought I had it growing up. And I'm saying, boy, it didn't come to me like that. So, so it's, it's exciting to me that you folks want to do it. And you folks are, you folks are standing behind the team and all of that. It's really important to me that, to work on a team where that's happening. And I thank you.
Are there any thoughts or questions?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Charlie, echo all platitudes and the gratitude for sure. No doubt, you're burning the midnight oil on a lot of this, so thank you all. And for the folks that could not attend this evening, please extend our thanks to them also. April 6th, or April 3rd, excuse me, super. Look forward to that greatly. And that you continue to work with the administration. I see we can get you some more teachers involved too. I'd like to see that.
We, we're working on that.
Yeah. Because obviously they have great ideas. I mean, they're the educators, so they'll help with this process tremendously, I should think. Go ahead.
Roland said that he wasn't going to necessarily ask for financial resources at this meeting here, but are there others, is there other type of support or actions you need from this committee to help you with this process that you're running away?
Thank you for mentioning that. We've been having this conversation, and we haven't nailed it down, but you will be hearing from us. We'll give you something to look forward to.
No, we expect, you know, both material and nonmaterial solutions are going to be part of this. We'd be fools to think otherwise. So anticipating, of course, you may still roll our socks down, but that's okay. We'll work from there, so you know, fire away when you're ready.
We'll continue to send notes from our meetings to the superintendent and to the chairman of the school committee, which we have. We like to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments from other members of the task force?
Roland, just again, on behalf of myself, I'd like to thank you for your passion and dedication. It is a mammoth undertaking, but I firmly believe that it's going to pay benefits twofold when we're done. So thank you, and I've enjoyed our conversations where we've both been lighting the pen on fire on our whiteboard, so to speak, explaining concepts to each other. And you know, in order to become truly the best, you truly have to have a shared vision of where you're going. And it's not just a vision of the superintendent or the school committee, it's a vision of the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Stick around, everyone.
At least there'll be some results presented here.
You should have locked the door before.
Now it's your turn.
Now we're going to take a look at our MCAS results. 2013 year. We've been working on a presentation for, we've changed our presentation for the last three years and keep honing it so that the information that we provide, not only to the school committee, that the public, is presented in a fashion that really understands where we are and where we need to go. So with that, I'm going to invite our director of curriculum up to the podium, Dr. Jamien, and she's going to start the evening off.
Good evening. Thank you for saying that, Roland. We're pleased to present information regarding the performance of Littleton students on the 2013 MCAS test. Over 900 of our students in grades three through 10 were tested in multiple subject areas this spring. In Massachusetts, grade level proficiency is defined by how well students perform on MCAS tests. MCAS measures what students need to know and be able to do as defined in the Massachusetts frameworks. These are the tests, the takeaway here from this slide is that there are differences in the ELA tests. Some tests are reading, some involve English Language Arts, and some involve a long composition writing. It's an overview of, of question types and accountability. The goal of MCAS is both to measure the performance of students against state standards and to provide useful feedback that can improve teaching and learning. In Littleton, we embrace both aspects of this dual goal and are committed to providing information on MCAS to all stakeholders who share responsibility. We just heard about shared responsibility for improving what our students know and are able to do. This is the state context. The content and skills in our state framework set the bar high for academic performance, as evidenced by the fact that for the fifth time in a row, Massachusetts students have scored number one in reading and math on the fourth and the eighth grade NAEP test. That's N-A-E-P, National Assessment of Educational Products. That's, Massachusetts has been number one since 2005. NAEP is offered every two years. But at the curriculum summit recently, six Littleton educators attended with me. The commissioner called the fourth grade ELA test the canary in the mine. And that's, that's a pretty strong image from the commissioner of education. And while fourth grade ELA was still tops in the nation, in Massachusetts, our scores went down by 5% on, on NAEP. So neither the commissioner, DEIC, or Littleton educators are complacent whatsoever about academic performance. And a focus statewide and in Littleton is on fourth grade proficiency. So you see statewide, in math and ELA, you have around 50% of students, one half of students statewide have achieved proficiency. This is our starting point. It's been the starting point of our MCAS analysis. In Littleton, we remain, we remain committed to supporting all students in achieving proficiency. It is from this perspective of commitment to rigorous measures of academic performance that the performance of Littleton students are viewed. Here again is the starting point. The next four slides are up there on the board in the superintendent's office, in my office, and it's the basic starting point of state to district comparisons on the number of students achieving proficiency. Eight out of 10 Littleton students, big picture, eight out of 10 Littleton students have achieved proficiency in ELA, with the exception of fourth grade, where we have seven out of 10 of Littleton students achieving proficiency. Next one. In math, the picture in math, between six and 10 Littleton students, and our nine and 10 Littleton students achieve proficiency when you look at grades three through 10, those grades four, five, and six, where you have six out of 10 students achieving proficiency, that's a picture. That's close to the state averages, and that shows the second statewide DESE focus area target, and that's on middle level math. And so we also take a look at how we do from year to year, and you will be hearing about that from the principals. Okay. All right. Major takeaway, we wanted to, there've been questions in MCAS presentations that focus on MCAS results analysis, is our processes. And the major takeaway that I would like you, or one of the major takeaways, is this process of data analysis is shared, and nor is it new. The first MCAS presentation that I made was in November 2006. I was here three weeks, and Dr. Bemis was interim superintendent. So in three weeks' time, I was not able to really affect a lot of change, but what I was able to see and what I did report to you, I saw in my notes, is that Dr. Livingston and Nancy Gustafson had established a culture in Littleton where the review of performance data did occur and did drive and monitor instruction. And it was a shared responsibility taken very seriously to report student progress to all stakeholders. The superintendents, the building principals, the teachers have, have continued that commitment to making data driven instruction, not just talk. And what is different though this year with the formation of a Littleton data team is that we're codifying and sharing our processes. We're sharing from school to school what goes on in the grade level data meetings at Russell Street, what goes on in the department based meetings and subject area meetings around MCAS. And we're bringing together the administrative council and the curriculum coordinators to review our data and to grow together in the analysis of data and to make, using a term, Dr. Detwiler and I, Mrs. Temple and Mrs. Rogers, attended a DESE webinar yesterday, workshop yesterday, and what we're endeavoring is what they said is to make data actionable and relevant. So you say, those are the data team members. We started our data analysis with the presentation by Dr. Harrington at the August administrative retreat. And we used his PowerPoint and some of the articles from Harvard Graduate School of Education in our elementary and secondary curriculum council. And I think sometimes it's always an act of courage to look in the mirror. So, you know, data analysis, these are some of the quotes in Dr. Harrington's presentations. And so we're taking a look at ourselves seriously in the mirror, looking at strengths, areas of need, areas that we need to focus. And you know, there's a lot of words there next to data in that, and that wordle. And sometimes with finite data points, it's almost like reading a phone book. Okay? You can get so granular that you lose the forest for the trees. And what we're endeavoring is to have a picture of the learning, individual and aggregate in our school. And that's why we use this picture, because here you have pictures of individual students. And when you put together all those individual students, you have a picture of aggregate trends or group trends for achievement. But just as you have a number of different pictures of a number of different students in that slide, when you are taking a look at the learning profile of those individual students on the other side of that slide, there's multiple data points, there's qualitative and qualitative information that you can get to understand the whole child. So these were the protocols and analysis that came out of our data team. Now here, this is an important slide. I'm not I'm not going to read to you what goes on, what was submitted by Dr. Finerty, six-to-12 science coordinator, Mr. Levine, six-to-12 ELA coordinator, and Ms. Ogden, six-to-12 math coordinator. But while I will emphasize to you, school committee always asks us, "What are your action steps? What are your action steps? What are you doing? What were the action steps last year? How are they compared to the action steps this year? What was the follow-up?" This CIA, that's our action plan. That's how we're making educators in Littleton, we're making the MCAS data actionable. We're taking a look at the questions, we're looking at trends, we're doing very serious, very deliberate analyses of MCAS data. And if you have any questions, subject-based or school-based, the principals and I are here to entertain those questions. And next steps, we have important next steps. Among those, you know, yesterday, we attended a workshop on Edwin Analytics, taking a look at how to use the publicly available information on MCAS, but also information that's available to educators on our students through the security portal and on the DESE website. I have made arrangements with one of my former colleagues in, who I saw yesterday, who I worked with when I was in the accountability unit at DESE, and he is going to be coming and making a presentation on student growth percentiles and ways to more effectively utilize Edwin Analytics. And finally, in that picture, on that day, you see the superintendent sitting there. He asked a very important question of the teachers and the curriculum coordinators. And I will remind you that the curriculum coordinators teach full-time in Littleton. That was not the case when I got here. Department members did not teach, department heads did not teach full-time. But they have a full-time teaching mode, and they're balancing that commitment as a curriculum coordinator. And Superintendent Clancy asked them at the end of that October 8th meeting, "Was this worth it? With, you know, the time you spent today with us, we know you have to balance your time out of the classroom." And they all said yes. And so we feel that we're coming together and sharing our data analysis and improving our protocols in a much better way, more effective way. So after, in January, we're going to be having those DESE presentations here in district. So at that point, at this point in the presentation, we will have the school-based presentations, and I will call my colleague, Mr. Bezil, for the Russell Street portion.
There you go.
There you go.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you to Dr. Jamien for leading us off, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to talk to you about the Russell Street School MCAS results. As you'll notice, Russell Street School's results this year were relatively flat. Our ELA results at the building level remained exactly the same. Our math scores dropped three percentage points, and our science scores dropped two percentage points. There's a couple highlights in there. There's a couple areas for us to take a look at, but in general, overall, I would categorize our scores this year as flat from last year. I apologize for the yellow on this slide. We changed the background color of the presentation at the last minute. As we look at sort of one-year relative strengths, if you look at third-grade ELA, and this is non-cohort data, so these are different groups of students, but our third-grade scores in ELA have increased significantly year to year, and that yellow data says this year, 86% of students were proficient or advanced in ELAM CAS in third grade, and that put us 31st in the state out of 955 schools. So that was a pretty significant highlight for us. Thanks a lot to the work done at Chicker Lane and our third-grade team and to a group of students who is significantly talented to start out with. So we are proud of those results. Third-grade math as well, 82% were advanced and proficient this year, and that's 187th in the state. If we take a look at breaking down, at Russell Street, Dr. Jamien talked about as a district, we put in some standardized protocols this year about how we would look at our scores. And at Russell Street, we dug into data much more significantly this year than we did last year. And if we look specifically at our non-high-needs population, 91% of our students in ELA are advanced or proficient, and 85% of our students in math that are non-high-needs students are advanced or proficient. So I highlight that so that folks realize that, and also to note that we do have an achievement gap that we need to keep our eyes on and try to figure out, how to figure out, how to create some strategies to close that achievement gap. For some students, we're looking at an assessment for whom it will never be reasonable, and for others, there's no reason why we can't be moving them into the proficient and/or advanced categories. So there is quite an achievement gap there, but I think those numbers for non-high-needs students were worthy of noting. Areas for consideration, open response continues statewide to be a concern, and at Russell Street, it continues to be a concern as well. I put this data in there just as a snapshot. If you look at our aggregate data, what this next graphic shows is multiple choice and open response questions, percent correct at each grade level, starting at third, fourth, and fifth. So open response questions, on almost every test, students can get up to four points on an open response question. There's one test at third grade where they can only get two. The way the state gives you a percent correct is they add up all the possible points, and they give you the percent of points that your students got. So if you look at third grade, even in third grade, with as great a scores as we got, 91% of multiple-choice points were attained and only 70% of open response points. And that deteriorates from there. 85% at fourth grade to 51%, and 84% of multiple choice in fifth grade to 53% of open response. I'll get into this further down the road about how we're looking at open response and writing as a whole, but certainly open response questions, we're losing significant numbers of points as we have in the past, and it's an area that Russell Street has continued to look at and elementary schools across the state have continued to look at. But it's clearly an area that is hurting us when we look at our overall scores.
Just ask a quick question. Is that the discrepancy between open response and multiple choice, is that type of discrepancy across the board at statewide as well?
It is.
So we're not lagging the curve in terms of that difference?
No, it's a great discrepancy statewide, and we're above the state significantly, both in our multiple choice and in our open response.
So are we above the, are we above the rest of the group in terms of the differential? Like, is there a greater differential statewide than here? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I don't want to speak to that 100% without doing the math for you, but that didn't glare at us when we did it, that we were worse, that the ratio was any worse there, but without doing the math, I don't want to speak to that. I certainly can look at it. But it has, the open response scores, much to the teachers dismay, because they have worked significantly hard on improving it, the scores have not improved. And we've taken a look at some of the exemplars that the state is giving us, and it really is requiring students, it used to be that students could pull the information out of the reading passage and just give it back, and sometimes students would give more than they needed to. And, you know, for instance, when I taught fourth grade, and it was the long composition, I used to say to students, "Okay, listen, it's a five-paragraph essay." You know, whatever they give you, if you don't have a third detail, make it up. The MCAS police are not coming. You want to, you know, have a five-paragraph essay. Then we'd get to the ELA test, and they'd have open response questions, and we would say to them, "Okay, here's the deal. You're going to read this passage. It could be on African snakes, and it doesn't matter if mom or dad is the utmost expert in African snakes. If it's not, if the facts are not in the article, don't put them in there, because you're going to muddy up your whole question." So it's a whole different mind shift for students when we try to teach them to be creative and innovative and tell us what they know, to say, "Just take what's in this one passage and give it back to us." So it's sort of a different thought process, and we've been working on the way we teach it for many years. And when I talk about next steps, there's a couple different things going on here that are taking a look at it in a different fashion. I'm not sure anybody has really cracked the code on why students are struggling with open response. I think as they get older, they get more familiar with the format, but it certainly is holding us back, and that's why I wanted to note it. There's a couple key areas when we dug all the way down to the strand data at Russell Street School. It's interesting because there are many areas where we're well above 80% success when we get down to strands, but the reading anchor standard and in particular, key ideas and details are a concern across grade levels and have been for multiple years. So that's an area that we're taking a look at. And measurement and data is a school-wide concern in math, which is interesting because the teachers are, you know, certainly working very hard in that area, and I'll address that when we get to next steps. And there's some other floaters out there, fractions at fourth grade, some things like that, but these are school-wide trends that we're noticing over multiple years that we really need to figure out how to show some improvement there. So those are areas of concern. Fifth-grade math this year was an anomaly. I've spoken in the past that we often see third-grade scores that are very high and then dip in fourth grade and come back up in fifth grade. That happened in ELA this year. In math, our fifth-grade scores were pretty flat to the fourth-grade scores, but our growth percentiles were short, were small. The state moved and we didn't move. And so that's an area for us to look at, what happened around fifth-grade math this year. We have outstanding math teachers in the fifth grade doing outstanding work, and I'll talk a little bit about that in next steps as well. And I mentioned achievement gaps are an area that we'll continue to take a look at. I'll go through these relatively quickly. Dr. Jamien has shown slides with these numbers on them already. These are this year's numbers, proficient or higher. So this is grade three reading and math. 86% of students are proficient or higher in reading, and 82% of students in math are proficient or higher. Outstanding results in third grade. We were very pleased with those. In grade four, 70% in ELA are proficient or higher, and 66% in math. And just to remind everyone, the long composition in grade four is tallied into the score, so it's difficult to compare the score to grade five and grade three because of the significant long composition writing that's scored at that grade level. And we will talk about writing and what we're doing as a district to address what we believe is an area that we can improve in in writing. Grade five proficient or higher percentages in ELA, 79%, 70% in math, and 65% in science. This was that large class, that sixth graders now. This is the whole school. When you take a look at the whole school proficient or higher percentages, our school improvement plan targets 80% of students being proficient or higher in all subject areas in MCAS. In ELA, we're at 77%, math, we're at 71%, and science, we're at 67%. I know Dr. Brinkel will be up here talking about science as well and the challenges around science that we're seeing statewide with students reaching higher percentages of proficient and advanced levels, and we're continuing to work on that number in science. These are the slides that we really like to look at, as we've talked about in past years. These are the cohort slides. They represent the same group of students as they've moved through Russell Street School and potentially now as sixth graders at the middle school. So this is our current fifth grade. These are their third grade and fourth grade MCAS scores in ELA. You'll notice the drop from 81% to 70%. Again, the same numbers Dr. Jamien showed you, but you'll see the proficient numbers remain about the same, but we lost the students in the advanced category. Again, a great deal of that loss comes from the writing that's required in fourth grade. Current sixth graders in ELA, the quick math here is 74% proficient and advanced in 2011, 69% in 2012, and 79% in 2013. So we see the fourth grade dip and back up to almost 80% in fifth grade, you know, which is our target number. And you see the significant increase in students moving from advanced in fourth grade to advanced in fifth grade. So relatively solid move there from fourth grade to fifth grade for this cohort, and their growth score was a 57%, their SGP. So those students grew relatively strong. That's the strongest cohort in the building and the strongest growth score in the building this year.
That was 67 SGP?
57. Fifth-grade math, this is third grade and fourth grade scores. You see the drop from 77% to 66%, and you see the slide from advanced and proficient there. There's a significant change in the curriculum as we talk to students, parents, and teachers from third grade to fourth grade and from fourth grade to fifth grade in the amount of curriculum and the pace of the curriculum. And so that's one of the things that we need to try to figure out, and I'll talk a little bit more about. But many students find the curriculum difficult to keep up with because there's so much that we need to fit in in the year, particularly before a May assessment. And so this is not an uncommon thing to see, again statewide, a third grade drop into fourth grade. There's an awful lot of standards that need to be addressed. This slide was the most concerning for us at Russell Street this year. This is the current sixth grade. They were 77% proficient and advanced in third grade, 72% in fourth grade, which is not all that unexpected to drop 5% into fourth grade, but they dropped again to 70%, which isn't a huge drop, but the state moved up around them. Their growth score was only 41%. So as they stayed where they were, they didn't do as well as students with similar scores. So that was a concern for us. We've talked about that, and there's several things we're taking a look at at fifth grade that I'll talk about in next steps. You know, a couple things right off the top. We have recently, we have previously done some of our internal assessments that are similar to MCAS in between the two MCAS windows, and our math teachers feel like students are pretty assessed out by the time they get to the math MCAS. So we've done the ELAM CAS, we've done grade, we've done G-Made, and now here comes the math MCAS, and some of our fifth graders go, like, "How many assessments am I going to take?" And so our math teachers feel a little bit like, you know, we're not getting their best. And so we're looking at some different DDMs that can be given differently, won't take as long, and will be given at different times of year, that I think will address that. This is also to note a little bit, the first year that the class size was larger at Russell Street, and this is the bubble class that is the big class. So, you know, I think the class size is reasonable at Russell Street. I'm not concerned that they're not getting a quality education, but it is interesting to note that we didn't get the normal pickup back in fifth grade, the first year that class sizes were bigger. And I'll talk a little bit about the time on learning in math and some other things that we're looking at, because I think those things may go hand in hand. This is a sample fourth-grade math question that I included for folks in the public and anyone in the audience that may have never had the opportunity to see what our students are challenged with on MCAS. This is one of the questions that was released this year. And the reason I included it is simply to share what we've talked about previously, that very often the math and science MCAS are so language-based that they're not only assessing subject matter. So if you look at this question, Nathan sold end tickets for a school play. Joe also sold tickets for the school play. The number of tickets Joe sold, J, is shown by the equation below. Which statement is true about selling tickets to the school play? Joe sold two more tickets. Joe sold two fewer tickets. Joe sold half as many tickets. Joe sold twice as many tickets. We didn't do well on this question at Russell Street School. My speculation is the vast majority of our students could manage the math if we gave them the math problem. But when they get to the language, and there's all four of those answers with very similar type language in them, many fourth graders get confused about the language. So one of the things that we've talked about is making sure students get more practice with that kind of language and trying to acknowledge that the test isn't just mathematical, that there's a whole big language component going on there. And as a side note, when we get to next steps, one of the things we talk about is rigor, and this is an example, this is one of the questions we did most poorly on in fourth-grade math MCAS, and the teachers very honestly said, "We teach teachers very honestly said, "We teach algebraic variables. That's the standard. We've never taught more than one." So our students had this question on the math MCAS but had never been taught to answer an equation with more than one variable. So the standard isn't clear, how many variables that you have to teach it with. So there's a couple of places when we analyzed and looked at questions where we said, "We really need to increase rigor," and I'll talk about that in next steps, where we said, "You know what? They're asking more of our students than we're giving them in our day-to-day instruction." And this is a prime example of that, where students hadn't had this experience. So while I think many of them would have been able to do that, there hadn't been explicit instruction on how to handle two variables. So as we look at next steps, I looked at next steps a little bit differently this year, and the team, we brought each team together, third, fourth, and fifth grade, with our math and science specialists and our literacy interventionists, and we looked at, we're flat. You know, we're flat. We've been flat for a while. In fact, we have a slight decline in our aggregate over the last several years. What are we going to do that's different? Because, you know, looking at scope and sequence, doing some of the things we've done previously aren't making a difference. We implemented all of our next steps, except for maybe one last year, with little improvement. So we looked at our next steps a little bit differently this year, and the first thing that we are doing is we have done our MCAS analysis as we have in the past, but there was much more guidance with the MCAS analysis with our interventionists and our specialists from the beginning. So the teachers weren't expected to do all that analysis on their own, and then teachers were part of the creation of the plans that you're seeing here tonight. And then we're going to be meeting monthly, similar to the middle school model I've talked to Dr. Branko about, to talk about at-risk learners and put specific plans in place at the student level. So our attempt will be to get at a more granular level what we can be doing for students, whether they're typical general ed learning students or students that have unique learning profiles, and how we can be helping them learn on the best trajectory they can learn at. And that doesn't necessarily mean they'll be proficient on MCAS, but I would like to see growth scores stronger than they are in a few areas. So we'll be looking at improvement at the student level. We'll be looking at achievement gaps, and achievement gaps are a challenge anywhere you go. They've been a challenge anywhere I've ever been, but we'll be continuing to look at, how can we close those gaps? And to a great degree, that will happen through those meetings, or we're looking specifically at the student level and what kind of plans we can put in place for children. We talked last year in our next steps about reviewing the FOST common benchmark assessments for our new science and considering implementation of them. Those will be implemented this year. They're formative, common assessments that the teachers can use in the science program to get a better idea of how students are progressing before they get to end-of-unit assessments. Writing at the district level, Dr. Jamian, Mr. Farady and I have talked about writing K to five. Teachers have raised concerns about writing K to five. I think our teachers do a fabulous job with writing instruction, but often they're on their own to pull together pieces from trainings they've had previously. Often, there's consistency at the grade level but not vertical consistency. So our school improvement plans are addressing in a multi-year phase-in evaluating and implementing a new writing curriculum, and that will be addressed. When it comes specifically to open response, our fifth grade team this year, one of their smarter goals is addressing open response specifically, again with a new strategy. We've tried several, and they're going to pilot a new strategy that implements some of the training that we're getting from Ideal Consulting and some other ideas that they have to try to make a difference with open response. And district-wide, excuse me, school-wide, we are implementing ongoing training that will happen throughout the year from Ideal Consulting that should help us with open response because it focuses both on reading and on writing and pulling key ideas from the text. And so it is close reading strategies, pulling ideas from the text, being able to talk to peers about them, being able to get them down in writing. So there'll be a shift to some degree in how we're teaching those skills with regard to writing, and hopefully, as of next year, there'll be a new writing curriculum in place for our staff as a whole, because I think that we would all acknowledge that we're seeing an issue with the long composition at fourth grade as well as open response, and that's an area that teachers have also said they would appreciate some support in. Broad academic areas of need, increased rigor. We talked about in every one of our grade level meetings, the need for increased rigor, and to some degree, that's as simple as raising the types of vocabulary that we're using with students when we're communicating with them, making sure that we are using challenging vocabulary, making sure that we're setting the bar high, and providing appropriate supports for students to reach those bars. I think that in many ways, we do a great job of accommodating and meeting students' needs. To be successful and at the elementary level, we have this mindset that we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable. And so one of the things that we saw when we really dug down deep this year is there are some places where we're not challenging our students enough, and they're seeing some questions that are more difficult than they've been exposed to. So we've had these conversations that we need to raise the level of rigor. Some examples of that are, I talked about the two variables, I mentioned vocabulary. There's an area question or two on MCAS where students have to measure a rectangle and do area, and the third grade team said, "We teach that, but they always have the measurements on it. They've never had to use the ruler to get the measurement and then do the multiplication." So it's a multi-step process. So increasing the level of rigor and making sure that we are pushing and understanding the level that the standard is pushing to. High complexity literature, we've had discussions that it's really important that we're engaging students with complex literature and high-quality literature, and at times making, and I think the Common Core will do lots of this with the nonfiction that we'll be bringing in, but making sure that we're providing students with rich, challenging literature. So we have a reading program in place that's relatively effective, but at times, as we're reading the passages that are in the MCAS, our teachers are saying, "The literature that's in the reading program is not this challenging." So we need to make sure we're exposing students to really challenging literature. We talk often about making sure they're seeing literature at their just-right level when they're reading independently and at their instructional level when they're working with a teacher. And we've talked about even making sure that students are exposed to literature that's even a little bit more challenging from time to time, so they see it and they're familiar with it and not expected necessarily to perform with it, but they're getting familiar with it with supports that are in place. We need to supplement everyday math, and we'll take a look at that, not only the scope and sequence, which is the next bullet, but we'll take a look at supplementing, one area that we've talked about in particular, as we've looked at measurement and data, is we feel like everyday math doesn't necessarily do a fabulous job on the standard for measurement and data, so we will supplement in those areas. Kelly Rogers, our math and science specialist, was at a conference with Dr. Jamian and took a look at a model unit on fractions that the state has offered. We're looking at rolling that out in one grade to pilot a model unit on fractions. So we will be piloting and supplementing in some areas in addition to our regular math program to try to get, again, the level of rigor increased and ensuring that students are getting all of the standards covered in areas that we may feel like our current program isn't quite what we'd like it to be. Having said that, I think everyday math, I don't want to give the impression that everyday math does not meet the standards. I think it is, and I think when their new version rolls out, which we'll get for free, it will be even better. They have an online suite, so I don't want to make it seem like I am being negative about the program, but I do think we need to supplement it in some areas to make sure students get what they need. The fifth grade teachers already to start this year have adapted the way they teach mathematics a little bit to increase the small group time that they're spending with students. They used to start in a large group and spend more time in a large group than they do now, so now they start in the large group and very quickly get into small groups and do more instruction in small groups. So we're hopeful that that will have some gains for us. And we're taking a look at the fifth grade schedule as a whole. Right now, part of the challenge that we've talked about is in third and fourth grade, mathematics instruction is 60 minutes, and in fifth grade, it's only 40 minutes because of the way they switch with science and social studies. And what we're coming to find is that's a real challenge for the math teachers to get the content in that they need to get in by the end of the year. So we need to take a look fundamentally at what we're doing in fifth grade with the switching schedule and with the mathematics time on learning and figure out if we need to make some changes there so that the math teachers get the time in front of students to have them covering the content and having time to work together and practice. So we'll be working with the math and science specialist, Mr. Rogers, and I'll be working with the fifth grade team to take a look at the schedule. Mr. Farady and his team have implemented a 35-minute math lab for all transitioned to grade two students at Shaker Lane. We're hopeful that we see some results from that. I mentioned this previously, we're implementing the training that Diana Malkin from Ideal Consulting has been working with us on, including the close reading strategies and staying within the corners of the text, which all will help us in that reading anchor standard that is a relative weakness for us at Russell Street School. Key ideas and details thematically continuing to be a concern, not only for reading but for writing at the open response level. And vocabulary, the research is showing more and more, and Mr. Clancy sent out the vocabulary email the other day, but vocabulary is so important for students. And so how can we raise regular vocabulary and academic vocabulary for students? And so we're looking at things like vocabulary notebooks where students are growing authentic vocabulary throughout their instruction in cross-curricular fashions. And we're evaluating and considering an implementation of a program called Achieve 3000, which is an outstanding program with great reviews that would supplement our reading program and give teachers and students the opportunity to work together in high-quality current events, nonfiction literature, and help students, they have a proven track record to move students up to multiple Lexile levels because of the way they're designed. So we're taking a look at that. So those are the results from Russell Street School. I don't know if you prefer to ask questions now or if you'd like to ask them at the end once everyone has presented. I'm happy to do whatever your pleasure is.
Well, I was going to say, I'd rather ask questions now because we've gone like 35 minutes there, and it'll be like almost now or before we get back to here, so.
But if you wait till the end, you might forget your questions from me.
I actually do have a question I feel is specific to Russell Street.
I'd like to go to ask.
So I'm happy to answer questions.
The question I have is specific to the building. So I think we all operate under the assumption that there's a high correlation between MCAS achievement and mastering of the curriculum, but I don't think anybody's operating under the assumption that there's a direct correlation, that there is some variance. For instance, you talked about the question, you know, 2XN equals J.
Right.
And from a math point of view, you felt like the students probably would have done pretty well, but from an implementation of algebraic concepts verbally or through the written word, maybe not as much.
Right.
And I think an argument can be made that that's fine. If they can do the math, then they'll figure out how to apply it as they get older and their mastery of verbal concepts becomes stronger as their brain develops. Do we have discussions, does the admin team or the data teams and things have discussions about where you would make a weighted decision, say, "We're going to accept the current outcome because we don't feel like chasing a higher achievement on the MCAS is really worthwhile relative to the well-being of our students and their ability to master other aspects of what we want them to do?"
I think that's a great question. So.
And a very political one for me to answer.
Want me to answer, Jorge?
Sure. You want to answer? Sure.
I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
We do. I mean, I've spent some time talking with you about cognitively-aligned concepts, and every now and again, we find concepts that are not cognitively aligned to the age. And we do make exceptions, but we're sure when we make exceptions. Are they going to get covered? Yes, they will. But there are certain concepts, fractions is a prime example. I don't care, go back 35 years in fractions, you're going to find pockets of curriculum in upper elementary and middle school that have been forever problematic because the majority of the students are not cognitively ready or developed to handle those concepts. So we have those discussions. We don't take them lightly, though. I mean, we were pretty tough on each other before we made that decision, but we do.
Yeah, I mean, I would totally agree with that, and I think the teachers feel that way to some degree. You know, I highlighted how strong our students that are not high-need students are scoring because I think in some ways, MCAS unfairly assesses some of our students who are being educated in a completely different curriculum and then expect it to be assessed at a grade level curriculum, and that's not appropriate for them. So, and that's not all high-need students. You know, let's be clear, high-needs includes students who, you know, are financially in a different place, and includes students who may have had ELL services. But I think that there are a group of students for whom MCAS is really disadvantaged. And MCAS is one data indicator and one period in time for students. I alluded to that with fifth grade math, where the teacher said, "We could sort of see it in the body language for some of our students that they had had enough when we gave it to them and we were worried this past year." You know, it happened to be a group of students that maybe had just had enough of the assessment. But to that point, as educators, we're under a great deal of political pressure and compared often to our peers in other towns, to our peers at other schools, and held accountable for this one piece of data. So it would be difficult to say, "Oh, you know, we're just going to chalk it up and say that's okay,"
Right.
because we're held accountable to it. So I think that we try to take it reasonably and say, "We always want to see strong growth scores for students who are not proficient." If you're not proficient, we want to see that your trajectory is strong, and if it's not, what can we be doing differently? And we constantly want to be talking, as Mr. Clancy said, with each other and challenging each other, are we giving students the best educational opportunity that we can? And to Roland's point, are we creatively solving problems? Or are we just going, "Well, it's out of our hands. That's the best a student can do," because that's not okay. We need to constantly strive and to get better, and then the score's going to be what the scores are going to be. You know, if I can look myself in the mirror and the staff at Russell Street, which is the best I've ever worked with, can look themselves in the mirror and say, "Listen, these kids are having great opportunities. They're communicating, collaborating, and, you know, I'm tweeting out stuff from classrooms that is amazing engineering experiences and all these things, and the scores are what they are." You know, it's one thing. You know, I think they're getting a great education at Russell Street School. So it is hard for me, before I come up and present, because I would love these scores to really be higher because I think the work that's being done by the teachers at Russell Street School for students is amazing, and I don't necessarily think these scores reflect the education that students are getting.
And it's one assessment, one measure of knowledge. I can't count the number of times I've met people that have been very successful in their related fields that were poor test takers, yet they're published authors and they're quite often the best in their field. So it's one measure. I mean, education is more than one test.
I have a fourth grader at home, to your point, that could, you know, I handed her that question, who's a fine math student, but with some executive functioning, attention deficit stuff going on, would just skip that question. Like, there's just too much language in there for her. You know, she would just move on. But if you gave her just the math, she'd be okay, you know?
It's good you didn't ask us, because we didn't do well on the French test.
Alex.
Yeah. First, on that note, do we think we'll see some improvement there when we switch to PARC because it focuses more on the comprehension? Or is that a, if that's a whole can of worms we don't want to open right now?
No. I think, based on what I've seen for questions on the PARC, my gut expectation would be we'll see a dip statewide, that I think the assessment will be more challenging for students. The question will be relatively, how will we do, you know, comparatively, but the questions that I've seen are extremely challenging. So I would be surprised if, and I don't know, listen, MCAS floats the cut scores every year. You know, there's stuff that gets played with. So I don't, when you, I don't know what the cut scores on PARC are going to be. They may make them look the same. I don't know how it's going to go, but the questions are more challenging that I've seen. I like them because I don't necessarily love rote regurgitation of knowledge. I'd rather have students applying concepts, but I think it's going to be a change in assessment style until students are used to that, and until we're really integrating that 100% into the classroom, we're going to see a dip in those scores everywhere.
But do you think we'll see, as we transition, do you think we'll be able to, in the classroom, spend more time on those sorts of things rather than the MCAS questions that generally?
Yeah, I would hope so, because we do practice. For instance, with the fifth grade goal, they are practicing and formatively assessing students every three weeks on an open response to see if the way they're doing key ideas and details now is showing improvement. But I think there's still going to be open response type questions, but there will probably be less, you know, rote regurgitation type questions. But I think that we're headed in that direction. I spoke last spring about, you know, my belief that we really need to be working with students, you know, about skills and giving students skills and Tony Wagner's work, and, you know, when I do that, I make people nervous because they think, I mean, we shouldn't give any content. We certainly need to give content, but the idea that we're the only way But the idea that we're the only way students are getting content, those days are gone. We really need to be giving students the skills they need to be effective communicators and collaborators, to be successful in work and college readiness.
Another piece, going to the fifth grade, we've seen over the last three years a steady dip in scores both in the math and in the science. Now, overall, the building scores are flat, and we have a small building, so we can say they're flats, relatively flat, even though they did go down a little bit this year. But I am concerned that there might be a trend there over the past three years in both math and science at the fifth-grade level. Can you speak to that at all, or what are we doing about that?
Well, as you look at the, I prefer to look at them as a cohort, and I only have two years back. I have to apologize, I don't have three years back. Last year was my first year, so that's what I have for data in front of me here. But if you look at last year's math, that's the biggest concern in the building. Fifth grade, fourth grade math to fifth grade math, because we almost always come up, like I said, we're relatively flat. We went from 72% to 70%. You know, at 140 students, that's, you know,
Yeah.
whatever, four kids or something. Do you know what I mean? It's not a ton of students to move a percentage point. But the concern is, last year, the growth score was 55%, and this year, the growth score is 41%. So what, the question we're asking is, what made that group of fifth graders not grow the way we would've liked them to grow? And so I think that's the better question, that that is an unusual thing that's happened, and we need to look at that. So again, we're looking at the way the math instruction's being delivered in fifth grade, that's been changed already, we're gonna look at the fifth-grade schedule. Again, fifth grade is super fast, we think fourth grade's fast, fifth grade is really fast, and the way it's delivered right now in 40-minute periods, students get a topic, you know, one day, and there's not a whole lot of practice time with the teacher, they get homework, they come back, and it's another topic the next day. So what we're talking about is, how can we get students more practice time with a teacher and making sure we know who knows what, who needs reteaching? So we need to look at philosophically how much time we're spending on mathematics and how that jives with science and social studies. And it might not be the same amount of time that we need for science and social studies that we need for math. I think science is a different issue. Science, again, is only assessed at fifth grade, and it's really assessing multiple years of knowledge over and over and over. And I think often, fifth-grade teachers feel like they need to teach kindergarten through fifth-grade science because it could all be on the test. And so what we've tried to say to our fifth-grade teachers is, "You need to teach your standards." And sometimes they say, "Yeah, but I know this is gonna be on the test, and if I don't go back to it, there's no way students are gonna remember it from second and third grade." So there's this dichotomy that goes on because I think as educators, we all say, "We don't want you to teach to the test, we want you to do what's best for students." But again, here we go, statewide, where we have sign scores that are, you know, I think Mark, I saw in his presentation, is gonna speak to where the top sign scores are at the middle-school level and what their percent of proficient and advanced is, and it's not great. Nobody's hitting that nail on the head, and so how do we do that? I'm very impressed with the FOS program we have in place, it's very hands-on for students. It gives them the opportunity to really engage in learning, to work with each other, again, to build the 21st century skills. But for whatever reason, that's not necessarily translating itself into strong MCAS scores. So we are continuing to look at that. I think the form of assessments that we're putting in place for FOS will help. I think, you know, taking, continuing to take a look at vertically how the standards are met in science and ensuring that there's no gaps. You know, those are ongoing dialogues that we're always looking at. But I do think science is a little bit more mysterious than math. I think in math, you can put our finger on, hey, it's tough to say in fourth grade you get an hour of instruction, and then in fifth grade you come in and you get 40 minutes. And if the curriculum is faster or just as fast, they're not getting as much time, it's not that unusual to say they might not score as well. So we need to figure out that piece. Science, I think, is a little bit more challenging.
Thank you. And building-wide, we didn't make sufficient progress per DESE in terms of closing the achievement gaps for high-need learners and for students with disabilities. This is something that's been going on, certainly it's not unique to Russell Street.
Sure.
But it has been something that's happened over the past several years, I think since we started looking at that indicator. I think 2009 was the first year of data for that, maybe 2010, but.
Internationally, yeah.
Internationally, sure. But in terms of the, in terms of what some of the district's problems are, just looking at this one metric, which we all agree has its limitations, students with disabilities and students who come from low-income families have very big, there's a very big achievement gap. And we have made gains in the past several years towards closing that, but it hasn't been, I think it was about 60, 65% of that gap was closed this year, or 65% of our progress towards closing that gap was made this year, where we wanna be hitting at least 75. And we've come short of that 75 mark several times. So is there a plan in place to sort of help those students, to identify those students, of course, but then to make sure that both the regular ed and their support instruction is addressing those needs so that we can see that achievement gap lessen?
Yes. Let me say first off that I think our high-need students are doing really well at 71% PPI comparatively to similar schools across the state. I think that's an outstanding PPI for our high-need subgroup. Again, I think expecting some students that are in that group to be proficient and advanced on an assessment that is not assessing what they're working on is an unreasonable expectation. So however, I don't wanna hold that up as an excuse, there are students that we could be moving in that high-needs group, and we need to do that. And that will happen, hopefully, when we get down to the student level and we're looking at, you know, it doesn't matter if they have an IEP, it doesn't matter if they have a 504, it doesn't matter if, you know, they're getting guidance services, it doesn't matter what services they've had already, if they're still not performing well on their assessments, what else can we do for them? So that's what these monthly meetings for at-risk learners are going to do, that are going to address. It may be that we're, you know, ordering additional materials. We have some advanced students this year in one of our grades, and teachers came to me and said, "Listen, these students are pretty proficient in X subject, what are we gonna do for them? I worked with a coordinator and we bought additional materials, and we have somebody working with them on advanced materials." So there's, we're pretty creative at Russell Street School to get students what they need and to be looking at them as individuals, whether it be that they need to be pushed or whether it be that they need to be supported, you know, at a different level than the general curriculum. So hopefully, I mean, that's our hope, that looking at it at the student level will show growth in that area. However, as you alluded to, high-need subgroups are an issue for many, many schools across the state. And, you know, as we identify students, you know, with disabilities and in other areas, that all impacts those scores. So there's no way to totally predict that. Again, their growth scores is what's most important to me. You know, that I'm seeing students that have solid growth. I mean, they could stay in warning and have a growth score of 88, and I'm gonna go, "Look at the growth that this child who's severely disabled has." So I think we wanna look at it from both perspectives.
I agree. And that median SGP in your building is about 50, is 54, 50?
Yeah, this year, our SGPs this year are not as good as they were last year. But, so if you look at all grades, last year, they were 59% for ELA, 55% for math, and then science doesn't get one because it's the first time. This year, they're 54% and 47.5, and it's that math that really pulled us down. Really, the ELA, last year was 51% in fourth, this year's 52, last year was 62.5 in fifth, and this year's 57. So very similar growth, you know, again, with such a small school, it's not a lot of percentage, not a lot of students to get off a few percentage points. But for whatever reason, fifth-grade math threw us a curveball, and so that's something we need to sort of really put our finger on.
Thank you.
So I think most of them have got hit around the table here.
You gonna go first next time?
Well, no, and actually, I'd like to maybe just expand a little bit, 'cause a couple, several times you talked about looking at the growth and, I know you didn't use the word intervention, but additional help at the needs improvement warning levels there. But students that are proficient and advanced still need to be challenged. And your general presentation didn't really talk about it. I think you've caught it just a little bit at the end there.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think that's a group that we can't let stagnate as they continue to go through the thing. Just because they hit the proficient mark doesn't mean we divert the resources away from them, because I think the parents will get frustrated, it's like, "Why is my child's growth scores going down year after year? It means the cohorts around him are doing better." And that's not necessarily a message anybody really wants to receive from.
Yeah, I think the one thing to take a look at, though, is, once you get into high-proficient and advanced, the growth score becomes less valuable because, for instance, you could be a, you know, 280 is the highest score, you could be a 272 in a subject area, go down to 268 and have a horrible growth score and still be very solidly advanced. So the higher you get in your proficiency and advanced level, the less valuable the growth score is. The growth score really, for the most part, was put in place so students who are not proficient could show success in other ways. So I think your general point is valid, and I alluded to that with Mr. Pratt a second ago, that, you know, we have a group of students right now that are getting sort of a sub-separate experience that's, you know, advanced beyond grade level, and we're certainly addressing that. But I just wanna make sure that no parents of students that are excelling are looking at a growth score based on a one or two-question drop and panicking about that.
No, it's just that I wanna make sure that it comes clear that we're not forgetting about the people that are, have achieved proficiency and that we're still gonna keep a strong rigor into the program, and we're not gonna be just check and done and then go focus on, you know, a couple of questions that we need to drill into other areas. Because I think that's a strong perception that may come across if it's, you know, if we're not careful.
Well, to that point, I 100% agree with you, and I, and I, we are absolutely doing that to the point that I just alluded to. And yet, this is a conversation that we have regularly, that when you start looking at all your different populations of students, that you go, "This student, this group of students needs this, this group of students needs this." Teachers get stretched way thin, and we, and it is difficult to do justice to all of those groups. So we are doing that, but I think the focus of this presentation is, you know, Russell Street School's a level-two school, why is that, and how are you gonna make it better? And that's why I'm not talking more about advanced learners. We're certainly focusing on advanced learners, but I think the side sort of venue of your conversation is a great one, that we do have such a wide range of learners in our schools that our teachers are working really hard to make sure they differentiate well for them. And even in individual classes, there's great ranges of learners that we're working hard to differentiate for, and they're doing a good job, but that is a challenge.
Because I think, you know, as parents within the community here, the benchmark is not always the state. The benchmark is other towns around that they could have possible education choices in.
I don't think the benchmark should ever be the state.
No, no, that's what I'm just saying. And, you know, and then I appreciate you addressing the next steps from last year, which ones you've worked on and the other pieces there. And in particular, the, last year, you had researched best practices in mathematics in other schools. You mentioned us doing 60 minutes down to 40 minutes in the fifth, sixth grade. What other practices of the other schools that are achieving a little bit higher than us in these areas?
Yeah, we're low. I think 40 is low. And so it's an area.
Other practices, because we're not the only community that would have a diverse set of learners within.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. And Mrs. Rogers, our math and science specialist, joined last year a Jaba-like group with area mathematics folks from around the area, you know, with folks that are math specialists, assistant principals, those kinds of folks, and started to gather some information, and that group intends to meet again beginning this year. They're having some problems, one of their leaders had some family issues going on, but they're gonna meet again. But 40 minutes is low. I mean, but here's the challenge, I think 60 minutes is a minimum for mathematics instruction. Some places go as much as 90 minutes. Those places that go 90 minutes, though, usually don't have an RTI block for 30 minutes that's separated out. At some point, there's no more minutes in the day. So it's a valuable conversation to go, where are we going to put all of our minutes? And some of the places that have full 60-minute math, 90-minute ELA, and a 30-minute RTI block are self-contained classrooms so that teachers then can flex their time and go, "Today, I need to go 70 minutes in math, and then tomorrow, I can squeeze science and social studies in." And then, or tomorrow, I'm gonna do a double math lab, I mean, it's a double science lab, so I can keep everything spread out, and then I'll do double math the next day. But there's pros and cons to every model. There's pros and cons to switching, there's pros and cons to self-contain, and those are the conversations that we need to start having at the fifth grade, and I think the fifth-grade team's really open to that. But we wanna be really thoughtful about it, we don't wanna make a knee-jerk reaction because we got MCAS scores and make a change in October, you know, and have parents say to us, you know, "What's that all about?"
I'm not advocating knee-jerk reaction.
Yeah.
Everything needs to be planned and thought through. Because one, you actually tied into my other one, and I don't wanna sound, I can't figure out how to phrase my question so it doesn't come across as negative as it's gonna come out. Last year, you talked about continued-tiered RTI model, and in a way, your scores demonstrated that that didn't really affect it. And then you just touched there about maybe needing more flexibility in how you're using all of your time blocks there, because your data, even though it's only two years and one particular thing, says the RTI had no impact to your MCAS.
Well, it's interesting, our data, our internal assessment data shows that RTI is making a tremendous difference. It doesn't necessarily translate to MCAS, but it shows we moved almost every single student that was struggling in different areas of reading at grade levels almost up to where we would've liked them to be. So our internal assessments, and that's one of the questions that I asked at the beginning of the year, was how predictive are our internal assessments for MCAS scores? Because our internal assessments are showing that our RTI program is very successful. You know, one of the drawbacks is there's, at times, not enough staff to service as many students as we'd like to service in an intervention block. And in some ways, and Dr. Detwiler, I'm sure, would concur with this, we're heavy-staffed compared to some places. So we do have nice staff to be able to do an intervention block, and yet there's times when our teachers say, because they are so caring, "We'd love to grab four more students for RTI, but we don't have somebody to take another group." So I think, I don't want our MCAS scores to give the impression that our RTI is not successful, 'cause I think we really are helping many students with their reading. It just doesn't necessarily translate. I really think RTI is a reading intervention, and I think that we're seeing a whole lot of challenge in writing in the ELA and MCAS. I think if we could get writing under control, we would see our scores, and I think many places in the state would see their scores move significantly. And we don't have a magic bullet, but we have a lot in place to try to address it. But I think the writing is far more of the concern in the ELA and MCAS than is the reading.
I'd like to thank the other members for asking all my questions. Thanks. Thank you very much for the response.
Kelly, Darrell asked a very good question. As comprehensive as the MCAS briefing here was for Russell Street, high-achieving students and how we approach them, it may be a future school committee meeting, a presentation on how we do address those needs also. I'm gonna ask Rita, our Director of People's Services, a question. The term "high needs" was used extensively this last 30, 40 minutes. What puts a child in that category?
It's a category the state has just established, probably in the last couple of years. It's trying to capture those students who have multiple strikes against them, you'd say that. Those are students who have been identified with disabilities and also are low-income and also have the language challenge. And so Littleton does not have a lot of those students. We do have students who are on IEPs, as I mentioned last time, but we don't have a lot of students, again, who fall into that free and reduced category for lunch. We have only 8% of our student population there. So overall, Littleton is lucky in that the students who come into the school are relatively in better shape in many ways than a lot of students in other communities. But that is what high needs is, it's trying to capture those students who are at triple deficit.
Not necessarily any one student is afflicted by all three of those conditions.
Right.
But if I understood you correctly, here in Littleton, the special needs category would be predominantly those children with disabilities.
So actually, as Scott was giving his talk, I was pulling up Edmund Analytics to look at some of the students that he was talking about. So I would say that, I guess this is probably last year's third grade, so one, two, we have about 12 students that would fall into that high-needs category.
Okay, and I don't wanna drill down too deep in that sort of stuff. But just, 'cause we use that term so much, and I bet everyone here in the room had a different thought as to what it may mean, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Right, and I would never reveal names, but I think what is valuable is, of course, to look at that data, because those are students that are at higher risk than other students. And what you can do, and I think that is what Scott was saying that he does with his faculty, is to really go into that MCAS data and look at specific performances. For instance, in the area of writing, and I think that's also something that Scott's already analyzed, is that there, you see patterns, you see patterns especially in why they are not performing as well, and sometimes it really is that open response.
No school?
Oh, you missed out. Darrell's back.
I've been waiting for you.
I thought you were gonna say, "Thank you for all your questions." So I'm currently reading this book called How to Deliver a TED Talk. So if you're a fan of the TED Talks, it's an awesome book. And one of the premises of it is changing your tenor, or your tone, or your inflection. So I'm afraid that Scott and I have that same spot, and so I'm going to lose you quickly. So I hope that I can talk higher or lower, but it's not going to, it's not going to happen the same for me there. So I am happy to present the Littleton Middle School data to you tonight. We have a lot to be proud of at the middle school. Does not mean we don't have areas of growth, and it does not mean we're not going to work hard to identify them, explain them to you tonight, and move forward for this coming spring. But I do want to talk about some of the numbers, some of the facts behind the numbers, what they mean, how we've interpreted them, and then what we're doing in certain areas to support the growth and the consistency that we have in some subject areas and in other areas to help push us in a virtue directory, as Mr. Bizzitlo said earlier. So overall, if you look at our scores under the top of this slide, you've heard from me for a few years now, I do not dwell that often and for that long on overall scores. I dwell long and hard on cohort data, individual student growth, and how we're doing from year to year, comparing apples to apples. So most of what I'm going to talk about is going to be talking about kids versus themselves from year to year. So while, you know, out of context, negative five or negative one, someone might go, "Ooh, a dip." That's one group of kids from three years, and compared to a different group of kids, the following subset, because the kids are gone and new kids are in. So what I really care about more so is the next set of data points that we're going to talk about a little bit. So these are areas that we've identified as a team, as growth or areas of strength. So in the eighth grade, we've been very consistent in ELA in general. We're very proud of that. Our eighth-grade cohort, which is our current freshman now, had 88% proficient advanced. That is a plus-three percent increase against themselves. So moving from seventh to eighth grade, that is a plus-three increase. One of the things we are looking at, and we talked about SGP and the student growth percentage, and I don't want to be redundantly redundant up here after Scott's spent so much time talking about this, but my understanding and my belief, and we talked about this at the middle school, is if we're below 50%, then we identify that as a concern when it comes to student growth. We believe that if you're above 50%, I mean, you'd love to be at 80, 90, or 100, but Scott talked about the reality of once you're high, what that means, and how hard it is to grow compared to the people who are very successful there, and that we don't put as much emphasis on SGP with the upper-level students necessarily. But at the middle school, we talk a lot about if we're below 50% and our percentage numbers are pretty solid, then we start to focus on SGP a little more. So particularly, if you look at that in eighth and seventh grade ELA, where we're holding very strong in the 88th and 85th percentile as far as students against themselves, we do, we are a little bit concerned about that 45, 42%, because we think that this is a cohort of kids who could grow. So I'm going to talk in a few minutes about how we, how we do in-depth data analysis around our students' individual abilities and how we address them. But I also want to make sure you hear from us tonight that at the middle school, one of the next steps that we have not done yet, we're about to embark on this, this team's next, is to start to actually do a student growth analysis. This is going to be the first year we actually do that analysis at the middle school. We've concentrated for a long time on the needs improvement and warning students, and students who need, to Darrell's point, to need interventions, or kids that we need to move from one subgroup to another. Now we're going to start to look at any area where we're below 50% and really take a look at how many kids aren't meeting that need and who those kids are, because sometimes, to your point earlier, they might not be the same kids. And so we don't want to lose sight of that. But that 50% mark is important to us. Also, keep in mind, seventh grade is where the big bad law of comp tends to hit. So you've heard this before, and I, some people agree or disagree with me, and I'll just say it again, that maintenance is not an ugly word necessarily, if you're really high-achieving or if you're doing well, especially in education with this curriculum, where if a student maintains a number and the curriculum expectations ramp up an entire year, and that kid is above average or even high-achieving, and the number statistically stays the same, that is not lost at all. And my definition is actually not even maintenance, because the curriculum went up. So in seventh grade, while we don't see a percentage increase, when those kids went from sixth, and remember, this is the same kids, sixth to seventh, to be at 0%, it's still 85% of them there, that's a really proud number for the middle school, because traditionally in the state, that seventh-grade law of comp is a killer. So we are looking at why only 42.5% in SGP, however, for this group. So we'll watch that group when they hit eighth grade and see if we change that based on some of the analysis that we do with this particular group of kids. Eighth-grade math, all I can really say about that particular number is, wow, that's my second year in a row to be able to say that in a proud way. So this is, this particular group of kids. So if you remember, a short time ago, when I was hired and came in here four years ago, we were a tick above 59%. We were like low 60s in this area. And so this is, I'm entering my fourth year. So in three years' time, with a lot of great work by a lot of great, hard-working people, new curriculum, you know, and a math team that's done a lot of work, that's, there's some serious growth in math. We have, we have halved our deficit. We have halved our number already in that three-year period of time. So if you remember, our school improvement plan has us trying to get to 80%. We have made a half, we've closed half the gap in that short period of time. And my first year was an analysis year. We actually used the curriculum and the staff that was inherited that year. So really, I'd like to say that that's a lot of work in two years' period of time. So in eighth grade particularly, you're looking at 75% proficient advanced. So again, out of context, you go, eh, could be a C if you think that way. But in reality, that group of kids went up 14% against themselves and had an SGP of 72%, which is outrageously high. And to continue in the good news department here, last year's eighth-grade cohort, the year before that, those would be our current sophomores now, had a 19% increase compared to themselves. So what we're doing is we're identifying, and I jumped ahead of myself a little bit, but it makes sense here, we're identifying currently best practices in the building that are causing these great things to happen, not just in math. I'll speak to this in other subject areas, but it's really particular math right now. What are we doing well, where, and how? And how can we just replicate that stuff in other grade levels with other teachers? Because in a small school, in a one-sim situation where you are seventh-grade math and you are eighth-grade English, et cetera, et cetera, it becomes very, very important that we have some systemic consistency and we have best practices implemented across all three grade levels. So in seventh grade, they have a 3% increase, again, compared to themselves, with a nice growth percentage of 64.5. So we feel really solid about that. Another area that I'm very proud of, because I pushed hard for this right out of the gate after signing the contract, and I think the ink was still wet, and I came to you begging for money for a position, and I want you to see that that relatively small amount of dollars comparatively to the budget has had a massive amount of value added at the middle school. And so seventh and eighth, seventh-grade math lab students, 83% of our math lab students this past year have maintained or increased their scores. 39% of them increased performance levels, and that's no small feat. You're talking about kids who are way down low in a warning category, or way down low in a needs improvement, they actually jumped an entire performance level. And so that is statistically a very, very big deal. Also, eighth grade last year had 80%, which is almost the exact same number, 80% maintaining or increasing their scores out of the math lab program, with 45% of them jumping at a performance level. So there's a lot, a lot, a lot of good work being done in that math lab program. So when we talk about intervention, and we talk about meeting kids where they are, we talk about length of class time, trust me, middle schools across Massachusetts, Mr. Bizzitlo, have the same conversation about how long is enough time? And we have 45, 46, 47-minute classes, tops, at the middle school, with a little fake passing time in between. So the reality there is, we put our money and our time somewhere else. It's just not during that block. So when you talk about the importance of that intervention block at the Russell Street School, that can't be lost, that even though he has 47 minutes in a particular grade level, they get more of it somewhere else, and the kids really need to get more of it. And that's true at the middle school currently. Areas for consideration, we're taking a very, very, very small, hard look, and microscopic look at sixth-grade math. We have had some ongoing concerns statistically there, where our sixth-grade math students, only 62% of them were proficient advanced. That was a substantial drop compared to themselves, with a very small student growth percentage, as you can see. And that follows an unfortunate drop with the previous cohort as well. So we have done a lot, a lot of analysis since August, and one of the things that we're doing is we're, we are looking at the best practices in eighth grade and seventh grade. We're having teachers visit. It's already happened since the school year started. We've had teachers, shadow teachers. So I've freed teachers up to go visit each other, watch how they're teaching, watch how the instruction is being given, watching how classrooms are being managed, how information is being front-loaded, to see if we can take some of those best practices and implement them in other places. We have also had colleagues observe each other for the purpose of giving that person feedback. So we've done both things in the math department already. We've had colleagues observe each other to steal ideas, and we've had colleagues observe each other to critique each other, all without an administrator involved. Very safe, very professional way of doing it. I'm really hopeful that I can actually get other departments to duplicate this practice at the middle school and other subject areas, but we're doing it for a specific reason in math this year. Eighth-grade science, you know, Scott kind of burst my bubble a little bit, talked about that earlier. So we've got a proud moment and a questioned, concerned moment, all on the same bullet point here. So statistically, we've got 68% of our kids in proficient advanced. I don't put a lot of importance on that negative 4%, because remember, they don't test it every year, so you're talking about a drop theoretically going from fifth grade to eighth grade. It's very difficult, unless the state, and trust me, I'm not advocating for this, but unless the state decides to just test science every year, like the other subjects, I think that, that is a statistic that I don't put as much emphasis on, quite honestly. However, there's a real interesting thing in the state, and we don't talk about the globe rankings that often in this particular meeting, but I, it's in here for a point tonight. We are 39th in the state out of 465 schools in the eighth grade. That puts us in the top 8% in Massachusetts of middle schools in science. And I say this for multiple reasons. One, because we have very, very proud faculty. So when you throw numbers out and you say 68%, and I challenge you to just ask yourself what you do for a living, and if your statistical numbers were torn apart in public, and you were the only person doing it for a living in the company you worked at, how you'd feel? And so with that in your mind, they're 39th in the state in the top 8%. So there is a science problem in general in Massachusetts, and if you rewind the tape and look at last year's presentation, I probably said the exact same thing. And so I don't apologize for that, it's the fact. And I do not use that as an excuse for having 68% of our kids in proficient advanced. We absolutely believe we should have above 80% in proficient advanced, just like we do in every other subject area. We believe that if our students can do that in math and can do that in English, that they should be able to do it in science. You were very gracious, along with the taxpayers, to throw a particular amount of money at the middle school science initiative. We know that we're going to do a three-year implementation, and we're going to be looking at a brand-new science curriculum. I will tell you that I'm proud of the work we did over time in the math department, and I think you can see the fruits of our labor there, that with adjustments to staffing, adjustments to programming, adjustments to materials, and lots of training, and lots of work, you can actually see evidence that the math model works and is working. And so I believe that that's going to happen in science as well. And so I believe that Dr. Finerty and Dr. Jamon and I will lead the science team at the middle school through that process, just like we did in the math process, just like we did in the world language initiative, and we're going to, our students in Littleton are going to be better for it. And I do predict that not only will we remain in the top 8% or even higher, that I do think that above 80% is in our future. But there's a real disconnect, and I don't want to get preachy and political on this tonight, but there's a real disconnect between what we're testing and how we're testing it, if we can be in the top 8%. And I gave you the reality there on purpose, because I know some of you really like this stuff. Schools ranked one through nine were 79 to 86%. The top-ranked school in the state isn't even in the 90 percentile. Schools ranked above us 14 to 33, 69 to 78. So again, I think that's a, that's a, an editorial on the state of science and/or how we're testing it, as opposed just to just the microcosm of Littleton's results. So I will leave that alone now.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people are clear, that I don't think, from my point of view, there's not a problem with science. There's a problem with the assessment strategy that's being employed.
Yes, thank you.
And the, the grade span strategy to testing STEM, in my opinion, is very weak and not well-founded. A little volatile at times, but the way, I have a pretty extensive experience in the area of testing. You're, you're developing or teaching curriculum that really doesn't even have overlap from grade to grade in the grade span. And all of a sudden, you have a culminating third year, and you're testing on three years. So, yeah, we could do better. We could throw our grade-eight curriculum away, and we could reteach grade seven and, or six and seven, and throw in some A concepts, but that's not teaching. So I get a little sensitive on the science issue, because I don't think the test is indicative of science skills within the state or within Littleton Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. We're also looking at our math lab sixth-grade results, and without getting too deep into this topic, I just would like to say that the bullets above where it's an area of growth and strength, I'd like to focus on that. I believe that there are related factors that caused the particular sixth-grade math lab results to be the way they are, and I don't think that's indicative or reflective of the math lab program itself. I think that relates to my earlier concern about sixth-grade math in general. Okay? All right. So I'm really not going to speak to these, because I just did. So they were in the slide I just went over? If that's okay with everyone? I will speak, I will speak to the cohort slides, and again, you guys can analyze them. There's not a lot of talking points related to these. What you need to hear from me, as, and I'll spin through them as I speak, what you need to hear from me as we talk about this is two things. One, that we've done, we have already done deep, deep analysis on our students in the warning and needs improvement categories. And we have already put interventions in place for a majority of those students in the classroom and outside of the classroom. And our next step, as I said a few minutes ago, is now we're going to look at the student growth percentiles to try to figure out who the students are in each grade and each subject that are below 50%. If they're different kids, or if it's for different reasons other than why they're in needs improvement or warning, then we're going to try for the first time to come up with not necessarily a high-end tier-two or three intervention, but just some kind of action plan that will help us address closing the student growth percentage. Because we've talked a lot about this in Littleton, and I, we all have friends in other school districts, we are pretty well-educated to student growth percentage right now in this town, and I can't tell you, it's kind of a proud thing, I can't tell you how many parents have come to me since the start of the school year not to talk about their kids' scores. They've emailed me or called me and shown up to talk to me about their student, students' growth or lack thereof, however they determine it. So I think it's an important conversation we can continue having. Again, to Scott's point earlier, when you're at the upper level, it's a little more difficult to talk about it, and maybe then we're trying more to differentiate the high-end instruction to meet the need as it is to worry about the growth. But at the middle school, we've just specifically picked below 50% as a target area this year. So in our next steps, and I've got a couple slides on this, if you can indulge me just to talk about these a little bit. Some of the first section is just really, sorry. Let's skip over. I'll start with this one, in reverse order, I think. So we'll start with this one. In all three curriculum areas, just as an overview to tell you, I mean, you guys kind of know the drill, but we've done a lot of MCAS analysis, we've reviewed our item analysis reports, the student cohort data, individual data. We've begun to plan and implement lots of adjustments already based on the individual kids' needs, and the department heads are leading the overall curriculum adjustments. So for example, Mr., the curriculum coordinators, I apologize, is the right term. So for example, Mr. Levine in ELA has started to talk about which areas, when they do item analysis, are we still not hitting? And how can we then adjust what we're, what we're focusing on in the classroom? Do we spend more time, or do we do it differently? And so those, those areas are already being discussed. A lot of great things that are not in this slide that are happening, it's interesting how everything is hitting in Massachusetts at the same time, for good or bad. But we're, you know, there's this big focus on teacher evaluation and goal setting, and I'll tell you that so many of the departments at the middle school, and I'm sure this is probably true at the other schools as well, are creating SMART goals, you know, per the new evaluation model, that directly relate to this information. So the entire ELA staff at the middle school has created a SMART goal around vocabulary and around grammar. We have other teachers, along with our speech pathologist, who's proud of this work as well, who have created SMART goals around identifying, and the science team is doing this as well, identifying high-frequency words in subject matter. So what that means is in science, they're going through all of their texts, all of their readings, all of the information that they use, and they're figuring out what the most important vocabulary words are that are tripping kids up. And basically, the old days of spelling lists that you and I grew up with, with no context, can you, can you write them and memorize them, and who cares if you can use them? And I'll tell you that in some places, that's still happening, and I have a seven-year-old that's memorizing words and not being asked to use them. It's infuriating. But those days need to go away, and what we're doing is we're trying to identify those words, make kids be able to spell them, define them, and then apply them. And so ELA and science particularly are doing that, because- And so ELA and science particularly are doing that because to Scott's point earlier, kids are not getting tripped up by just the math or the science. They're getting tripped up by the language. And so one, one is to identify and teach the words. The other that we've talked about, this is why teachers observing other teachers is so important, because we're asking them to use similar language in the classroom. So if the eighth-grade science teacher uses high-end language and the seventh-grade science teacher, and believe this is not happening, this is just a hypothetical, and the seventh-grade science teacher is using lesser language to teach the same information, that's problematic. And it's possible that we've identified that happening in some subject areas and it's, and we, I will tell you that we are addressing those. You know, that's not on this slide, but it's totally related to the, to the growth model of the school and how the staff has taken to this goal-setting process in a very authentic way that's going to impact their practice and what they're doing in the class. And I would argue it'll probably impact these scores even though that might not be the actual intent of the goal originally. In ELA, we are continuing with the development and the implementation of co-teaching. We have special education staff in ELA classrooms in all three grade levels. There are, I've spoken to this before, there are a variety of levels of co-teaching. The literature tells us there are six formally. We're doing maybe two or three of them formally and our staff is getting better every year. And a lot of the literature says the longer a team is together in co-teaching, the better we get. So theoretically, after five years together, we're finishing each other's sentences and we've been embedded together in the curriculum and in the practice and you can't tell who the lead teacher is anymore. I will tell you that in some rooms on some given days, that is totally factual. And then in other relationships, it's still the, it's still dominated by the content area because of, because there's a learning curve in knowledge. But that's okay, I'm okay with that because I still believe the kids are getting way better services and education in those particular rooms than they had been before. And so, you know, we're in our, I think our third year of doing that in ELA and we're going to continue to work on that. We are developing a plan, as I said earlier, to address the needs of the 14% in the needs improvement and warning. So the ELA staff, if you know any of them, is very proud and cares about these numbers and cares about moving kids forward. And, you know, we're funny in education and those of us who have just been educated, you look at numbers, just think of letters. Nineties are As, eighties are Bs, seventies are Cs. And while I don't think that correlates, I think we're fixed on that. We're raised with that mentality. So, you know, they look at that and they go, 80%, we're getting a B. So, you know, there's a pride moment there for these teachers and they don't want 14% of their kids to be in that needs improvement or warning category. So we're talking about that. We're a deficit at the middle school in this area because when I came here, I didn't have to advocate for a literacy lab. So while we've done great work in a math lab model, because we had so much need there, I don't want you to think that, you know, 14% is okay. It's not okay. We just don't have an exclusive or separate program currently at the school to address that because of the population size. So that's, that's a challenge that we continue to try to overcome. And if you remember, our SIP goal was to increase proficient advanced from 91 in 2012 to 94% in '15. And I, again, I believe that we'll be able to get there in time. In science, our SIP goal was, you know, to increase from 66% to 80%. That is a very large goal over time. But again, I do believe, I'm not, I do believe you're going to see growth between now and then, realistic growth. And I think over time with new curriculum and changes of the middle school, and I don't want to steal the superintendent's thunder, but there'll be some changes this year and there'll be more changes moving forward because of the, because of the budget and the approval to do a curriculum review. So I do think that we're really talking about doing a much, much more authentic science curriculum that is going to push kids in the right direction. And so will it translate to percentage growth in a test that might not measure all of that? I can't speak to that today, but our hope is that it will. And as you know, we're going to execute a comprehensive review. And one of the things that Dr. Finity and I have talked a lot about is to review the programs of like-profile top 20 schools. So while we're proud of the number I threw out there from the globe earlier, what are those schools, whether they're at 80% or not, I don't care, but there's still 20-something schools above us, you know, statistically? What are they doing in the eighth grade, oh, not in the eighth grade, what are they doing in their middle school science programs that we can steal? What best practices? What curriculum materials? What programs? What instructional methodologies are they using? Whatever the what is, one of the top two or three steps this year that we're going to do is we're going to review those programs. And I specifically said like-profile, we're not going to go out to the Benjamin Franklin Charter School, which is at the top of the state and has nine kids in it. That's an exaggeration. But, you know, we're going to find like-profile schools because that's, that's the reality. And so that's an important thing to put out there. Oops, I'm going to go back to. So in mathematics, as I said earlier, we're proud of the math lab. We're going to simply continue with the full-year math lab class model. We have shifted the model, originally not because of math lab, but because of some schedule changes we made in the Unified Arts between, between last year and now, we restructured our math model. And I wish I could say it was deliberately to increase the math model, math lab model, but it was an, you know, you get those unintentional wins. This is one of those unintentional wins. So what happened here is instead of having a hybrid of three and two times a week, students are now getting two blocks a week. And on the fifth day, our interventionalist, our math lab specialist actually goes into classrooms, which is a fantastic win. And so it's a mix of that pure one-two-three concept. So she goes into the classrooms where the kids she's servicing in math lab are and she is supporting not just the child's need in MCAS-related math, but she's truly supporting their grade level needs in the grade level curriculum. She was trying to do that through the model sub-separately, but now she's actually going to the classrooms once a week. And she's building her own schedule and she's figuring out which kids are in most need. She's in contact with her three colleagues regularly and they'll say, look, this is the class I need you to come in with this week, this is why I check in with so-and-so. And it's a very fluid thing and I'm proud of the shift. I wish I could look you in the eye and say it was done for that reason, but it's, it's a nice win. We're also going to ramp up our school-wide monitoring, progress monitoring. So in a nutshell, what that means is we're actually going to stop and look at our end-of-unit assessments more in real time than we have in the past. I can't guarantee that we're looking at them every time they're given, but after a couple in a row, we're sitting down as a department to talk about which kids are moving forward, which kids need to be retaught and which kids might need remediation. And so we were not doing that in explicit deliberate way last year as much as we intend to this year. And again, using MCAS and GMAID in the best way that we can. We're in our third year of implementation of our school-wide program supported by the Glencoe McGraw-Hill. It is aligned with the Mass curriculum framework, so it incorporates the Common Core. And as you know, in seventh and eighth grade, we have leveled programming. We wholeheartedly see results in that area and have heard from the high school already in a very short amount of time that they are seeing differences in preparation in the math program for freshmen, both at the upper level and at the grade level level. And so that's important to just keep in the forefront of your mind. This is really only our third year doing all of that work and it's really helped out a lot. Also in our third year of co-teaching in math, really strong co-teaching in math, which is strange actually because in many cases, special ed teachers are more literacy-trained professionals than they are mathematical professionals. But what I've noticed is they bring that level of differentiation and level of how to accommodate students to the classroom. And no disrespect to the engineers, mathematicians, or scientists in the room we're watching, but they don't tend to be that way all the time. They're the in-the-box, go-right-through-it people sometimes. And it, sometimes it takes someone who can do that work and think out of the box and present other ways of doing something to the math person. And it's been pretty effective in many of our math classes. And so we're proud of that work. It's just a, it's a surprise because I really just would, I would have predicted personally that it would have happened stronger in ELA first, but it's fascinating to me that the connections have been made in math. I already spoke to this a little, we are reviewing our pedagogical best practices in an effort to replicate them across all grade levels. So what are we doing in eighth grade? What are we doing in seventh? What are we doing in sixth? What are we doing in the math lab that makes sense to do everywhere? Also, what are we doing in those areas that are not working or not making sense? And so that's difficult to do with a small staff. It's personal work, which, we're doing it well and we're doing it aggressively, but we're doing it respectfully. And then we have our goal, which we do think is attainable. We halved our number in two years. And so we think if we halve the number in two years, a couple of years from now, we can have it again. And we do, we do believe we can get there.
Daryl, you want to go first?
Yeah. You were talking about the sixth-grade math. What about the transition? So we change programs, we change everything from fifth to sixth grade. Is there other alignment issues or the vertical alignment issues there or is it just sort of an independent?
It's, it's in-house work that we're going to continue to do. Yeah. I believe the students are coming to Russell, to, to the middle school from Russell Street with the skills they need to be successful. And we are going to currently look at our pedagogical approaches and make sure that we're doing similar practices in all three grits.
And then, let's see, you talked about that one. Time, time seems to be a recurring theme with your presentation and previous one about, you know, is there enough time to squeeze everything in and where are we squeezing? And have we squeezed so much that we're losing effectiveness in different areas? Is there a recommendation at some point that comes that says you need more time?
Strangely enough, no, not right now. Well, time start to finish or time from a class-period perspective? How are you asking that question?
Do you have enough instruction time during the week?
From the start of the school day or during?
Or whatever, you know?
Well, one of them I can't change because you'd have to renegotiate that. So you could try to change it. And the second, yeah.
You could make a recommendation.
Well, no, are there, could you do all the work? I don't know.
No, I mean, I'm trying to understand, we keep putting 20 pounds of potatoes in a 10-pound sack sometimes from the.
Well, I don't, so, so I don't know that that's true at the middle school. I mean, I, one of the, I hate to say this at the school because I, you know, I went from the assistant principal role to the principal role, figuring I was going to drop things like discipline and scheduling and stuff, but then I got here and that's, you know, it's me. So I'm very good at scheduling and I get that and like that. Every year, every year, I ask the leadership team, go back to the team and ask them, what's working with the schedule, what's not, what do we need to change? So if you do remember, right out of the gate, without even working a school day with students in front of me, we had, I met with the leadership team in August and tweaked the schedule and changed the amount of time. Shortened up, lengthened an advisory block and still found a way to gain contact time. We have 47, 48 minutes. No one is saying 60 minutes is better. What I'm hearing right now is we need to make sure we're using sound instructional practices and that we're maximizing those 48 minutes. You know, we've got second-step time embedded in there, we've got a robust Unified Arts program, we have an advisory block in the morning that is not wasted time. We're doing SSR, which is sustained silent reading. We have high-end students going out to virtual high school and struggling students going out to interventions during that time and students who get extended service providers, speech, OTPT, all in that first half an hour. And because we preserve that, they don't have to drop a Unified Arts class, which as a Unified Arts person is a good thing because remember, middle school is still supposed to be about creating well-rounded students and educating the whole child. So it's a long-winded answer, I have heard nothing about needing 60 minutes. And to some extent, I've had teachers say, look, we're doing well, let's just keep refining right now.
That was a good question though.
Yeah, no, it's a great question because every, because if you don't ask it and if we don't ask it in-house, then you're just doing same-old, same-old and you need to know if there's a variable that needs to change.
And if we don't know, you need more time. Just because if the contract says it, we don't know that we need to.
Yeah, I was, I apologize. I was trying to do a little bit. In every industry, could you say like if I had a 10-hour work day, I could do more? Yeah. But sure, we could do more, but I, I'm not, I don't know if there's any data to say we do better work. We might do more work.
Just wanted to understand. And education doesn't stop in the classroom?
No.
Yeah. Regarding that transition that Daryl was speaking of, when a student moves from the fifth grade to the sixth grade, do those teams sort of talk to each other? So if we, if we see?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we do great transition meetings. Actually, we, they gave up their own personal time because we didn't schedule it on contract time this year to go down and meet with the Russell Street teachers. The math issue is not related to transition and it is not related to preparation coming to middle school.
So the fifth grade and sixth team, and sixth grade teams will get together and say, let's say we have a student who needs help.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And as a matter of fact, that team does all of the placement for us. It's, they, I thank them every year, the fifth grade team does all of the placement and all the, they're not our children until that first day. We know nothing about them, to be honest with you. So it's difficult to do any of that prep work without talking to that team. There, I go down with the sixth grade team and we do a ton of work with those guys every year.
And similarly, if I could just add one thing, the transitions between schools here is very, very strong. Mr. Bazigo made a reference to what goes on at Chaytor Lane, but the second grade two teachers, for as long as I've been here, I mean, seven years I've seen it, how they interact and student placement with grades. So I've seen it with, you know, different principals in the role as well and that's continued. It's very, very strong and it's very, very detailed in this district.
Good to hear. Also more of a data question, when we're looking at SGP in EOA, am I correct in saying that we're looking at SGP, for instance, from seventh grade to eighth grade? We're including that long-comp score in that?
Yeah, right, right.
So, so when we see that dip, it, it is in part could be due to that, that long-comp portion of the test that isn't there in other sixth grade or.
Well, there's a dip in SGP, but there's not a dip in the percentile.
Right.
Right. So I suppose, yeah, I suppose you could make that argument. You know, it's tough because they don't, again, just like science, they don't test the, they don't test the long-comp every year either.
Right, right. So they have it fourth, seventh and tenth?
Yeah. So, yeah, so I, I, you know, you would be correct if we didn't also see below 50% in eighth grade though. So, you know, you could push back on me if I agree with you completely and just say, well, there's also a dip in eighth grade. We want to look at our ELA SGP in general.
Okay, just, just more of a.
Because we don't want to sit back in our laurels and just say, wow, we're doing great in ELA. We are, we're doing well in ELA, but we want to take care of the percentile of growth too.
Right. Also, just going back to the time issue, you spoke to this, this already a little bit, but are we making sure that our kids have enough time for the health, the band, the music, the gym?
Yeah, yeah. The middle school schedule is extremely sound as far as middle school methodology goes and preservation of all of those subject areas. We do make decisions with families around intervention and we make decisions honestly with families around high-achieving students as well. But that's okay. I mean, you know, there's, there's a whole whatever it takes concept out there and I believe the whatever it takes concept should be applied to the high-end learners as well as the struggling learners. And I'm okay with those decisions as long as the families understand, you know, to Daryl's point, that there's so, only so many minutes in the day and only so many opportunities to learn and where should we put our primary focus in particular to that student?
And I understand that the state sort of puts this paradigm, puts us as a district, where we're tested in English, we're tested in math and every third year essentially we're tested in, in science. What that means for the social sciences, for history, which has never actually had a real MCAS, they, they were sort of toyed with the idea. They've been required to do it since 1993 and they've toyed with it, the idea for a little while, but they've never fully rolled it out. One of the things that, that I think we all need to be cognizant of, and I'm sure you can sort of feel the strain from time to time, is how, is how to balance the tested with the non-tested. Because you spoke to it earlier, we value the well-rounded student in this district and hopefully all over the country, but we can't always do that when there's so much pressure on these certain subject areas where it tends to be all we really talk about because that's the data we have.
So I mean, I have two comments to that. One is our mentality at the middle school is we will exhaust all options before we play with time. Because time does not equal better. More time doesn't make you more proficient because you could still waste it or use it inappropriately. And I could do more with less time if I'm really efficient and productive at what I do. So one is that will be the last thing we look at, doesn't mean we won't look at, but it's always the last thing. You know, and second, we're moving into the world of DDMs, again tied to it at evaluation, but I have everything sitting at the same time here. So districts are going to be required to create DDMs to help us measure growth and the impact of, the impact of teachers theoretically on student growth and how are we doing those untested subjects? So as a, as an, you know, a recovering music teacher, I wish I was teaching music now I, I wish I was teaching music now because I would be proud to be able to create ways of measuring my impact and how, how successful my kids are in my programs. So, that's going to be a ton of work, but I think, you know, it's not the MCAS, but at least it's an in-house measurement that we can trust over time.
And I have a couple of DDM questions I'll save till the end. But, thank you.
Teacher shadowing others, excellent. First, second, third-year teachers, how much time does that trainer spend with them in the classroom?
Mentor?
Or the trainer?
Which trainer?
Which trainer?
Roger. Because you brought up earlier about our industries, you know?
Right, right.
And our productivity numbers being put out in the open.
Right.
But also, our industries, we have something called trainers.
Right.
People actually train new employees and the training doesn't stop. And I know you do professional development.
Yep.
But the trainer's also active in the actual environment in our industries, if you will. Where teaching just the way it is, we put them through student teaching, Roth, and certainly there's mentorship, there's some supervision. But, here's what I'm driving at, Kelly. We've got a term in the air force called gray beards.
I don't know if I like that.
Wait a minute.
It's like three of them in the room.
And that's where highly talented, skilled, mature practitioners in the field come back and offer expertise to those new to the field. Now, I know there's a dollar, you know, cost associated with that. But, I'd ask you to consider maybe some way, somehow, if that would be of any benefit to us. So, that, and it doesn't just have to be that first, second, or third-year teacher. I'm not pointing that out.
Yep.
Because we all mature through our years and learn. But, would it help us? And certainly, I don't want to be calling, you know, Ms. Farmer gray beard. Although, Ms. Farmer would be about 80 years old today, my first grade teacher. Are you getting my point on that?
Yeah, and, you know, I, for sake of time, I'll keep my comments really short on that. You know, we, we have had those conversations around the table. One way we do handle it, though, is we encourage our staffs to hook up with teachers and other systems also that have been recognized for some, some achievement in terms of the subject area. What we're finding, though, in education, and it's really interesting, is our teachers that are coming into the profession have very different skill sets than some of the teachers that have been in the profession for 25 years. And we find that there's more of a dual learning than there ever has been before. Twenty years ago, it was more of a one-sided learning curve. But, now, it's amazing how, how both benefit from, from that relationship. So, we'll certainly continue those discussions. But, as I said, we, we see more of a mutual benefit more than we ever have.
Well, and we're trying to foster a shift from this old-school concept of teachers being contract employees, you know, independent contractors in the classrooms to full-team members. And that's been a very slow shift over time in education. So, there's a whole methodology out there in the literature on instructional rounds, which is stolen from the hospital concept of doing rounds, where, you know, teams of educators go out, some administrative teams and others are teams of teachers. And so, we're just starting to try that at the middle school. And I've actually already reached out to two other local middle schools to see if we could have a couple of their people in a certain subject area come in and do observations and reflections with us, and then we could go back and share that. And that, the only cost, depending when you do it, is the possibility of subcoverage. So, it's, it's small dollars and it's big bang for the buck sometimes.
And that's one area. I call it learning walks, innovative learning walks. But, we've had to cool our jets on that because of all the other initiatives.
Right, right.
We want our staff in class and teaching as much as possible. But, no, let's, we'll certainly continue though.
All right. The takeaway, I guess, would be, you know, at least one school committee member is willing to kind of attain that there's a bill associated with that. So, thanks.
If you'd like to let us comment.
I just respond to ways that Superintendent has encouraged us to sort of achieve that goal of teachers interacting with each other. Two things that I would say. One is the change in the tuition reimbursement so that there's the monetarily rewarding of the $1,000 teaching, teachers taking conferences. And this is how they can build their skill sets in, in ways other than through graduate course work. I made that, that presentation, but for, to take Dr. Branko's words, for a small amount of dollars, it's had a vast impact. And then the second thing is at the administrative council, and, and this is what Mr. Bizidlo utilized, the model we utilized this year with the, with the new hires. Superintendent Clancy has emphasized, when you hire someone, you're not just hiring someone for one classroom. You're hiring someone to be part of the team, part of the grade level, part of the school. So, take a look at that skill set. And I think, you know, if you read in the Littleton Independent, there's, there's, you know, there's always those vignettes and pictures of the new teachers. Patina and I are proud of that because we run the teacher orientation. But, if you take a look at the skill sets of the teachers coming in, they really do round out the grade level or they round out that department. And I think our principals have that in mind, keep that in mind.
Ready for chat?
Good evening, and thank you for mentioning us gray beards. Happy to represent tonight. And I'm intrigued by that concept of having, perhaps we could bring it up, Superintendent Admin Council, the idea of instructional coaches. It would be an intriguing concept. I think it could have a pretty big impact if we had master teachers or freed-up people in some capacities. I just wanted to add my comment, my two cents in that because I could see incredible benefit. It's clearly a staff position that exists in some of those high-achieving school districts that were mentioned earlier tonight, but, but aren't currently in play at, at the Littleton Public Schools or in the Littleton Public Schools. So, anyway, I'm here to present about MCAS and as well as my colleagues. And I'm happy to announce to you tonight or report to you tonight that we have once again demonstrated consistent high performance at LHS. And it's a thanks, a special thanks to our LHS faculty as well as the Littleton Middle School, Russell Street, Shaker Lane, principals and teachers who all contribute to that success once the students arrive to the high school. It is a cumulative process. They've had lots of practice, lots of experience. You can see how dedicated our colleagues are at the other buildings to the process of preparation. And as a culminating experience or the final end cast, our students have done quite well historically. It's especially important this year to recognize our students for their outstanding efforts and performance. I'm going to point out later on in the presentation just to how well this particular cohort in the spring of 2013 performed. We could see some significant differences between this cohort in spring 2013 and the prior. So, it's a tribute to their dedicated effort that our scores are high. Again, I also have to make a very important correction, and I want to make sure John Lance has attention to this. And where it says the ELA SGP up here, that should be 63 points. That's my error in the PowerPoint, and I acknowledge that. I should have corrected that. That's from last year. So, 63 points. So, it's higher than what it was last year. And to highlight it even further, you go down to the math SGP. It's listed at, last year's 64.5, this year it is 72. So, I'll make that correction when we put the PowerPoint slides on the website. But, I just wanted to acknowledge that. The rest of the data, as far as I know, the CPIs and the students included, is correct. But, just to highlight it, once again, 99% of our students were proficient or advanced, and/or advanced in English language arts. 93% were proficient or advanced in mathematics. 94% were proficient or advanced in science. It's also important to highlight for our biology teachers and their dedicated work in the ninth grade, that 97% of our students were proficient or advanced in biology. So, I just wanted to mention that. As you, as you can see from the slide, students performed quite well. Very high numbers of students scored proficient or better in all subject areas. I've already noted the SGP adjustment or increase. And you can see that our performance in the advanced category is worth noting. A higher percentage of advanced scores in math, ELA, and science. From the prior cohort of last year's results, we went from 41% in the advanced category to 73%. That, that's just outstanding work on, on the part of our students. 64% to 70% in math and 47% to 55% in science. So, again, the students in the advanced category doing extraordinarily well. Just a few more needs improvement or student scoring in the needs improvement category in math and science. Not a dramatic shift there to report to you tonight in terms of students who are, who didn't do quite so well. Okay. Grade nine students, as I've already noted, did well in the biology. We had a few more students, you know, just about a dozen or so, or about 10 more students that, who took the MCAS this year than the prior year. Just a table for the folks at home to take a look at and see some of the results. Okay? And I've already sort of reviewed these a little bit, just to... So, cohort results. And we do try to pay a lot of attention to the cohort data. If you look at the class of 2015 in the ELA category, you'll see that from the time they took the test in 10th grade in the spring of 2013, from the time they previously took it a couple of years prior, and so, we've had them for a couple of years and we've had two years to prep them, they went up 5%, 5% more in the proficient or advanced category. That's the thing we, that's the traditional categories we like to report out to you. From 94% when they took it in 2011 to about 99% proficient or advanced, or 99% exact proficient or advanced in 2013. This was with that higher, you could see the higher growth. The SGP rose 17 points. That's great. Next slide. You'll see the class of 2015 mathematics, a big jump here in their two years at the high school when they last took the MCAS from 2011. About 39%, I think, or 39 points rather, are more proficient or advanced than when they were in eighth grade. Remember, they've been at LHS though for two years and they've grown and developed. Aside from just the content exposure, they've grown. They're not, they're not, you know, 12, 11, or they're now 13, 14, 15, 16 years old taking this test. And, and certainly, most of our students taking this in sophomore year are going to be 15, 16, taking the test. So, there's a, there's a maturation that happens here as well, and it's important to acknowledge. In science, you'll see that it's an entirely different test than what's happening. Mark reported extensively on what happens in the, in the eighth grade and on all the other grades. But, it's a very different test. But, we do see a big jump in the high school with about 97% of our students proficient or advanced and about a 31%, 31% more, you know, scoring in the proficient or advanced category. Okay. And just to go back a little bit, I wanted to point out the cohort differences a little bit here, just to comment a little bit. I looked, I looked at last year's presentation just to see how this cohort compared to the previous cohort in the spring of 2012. And our ELA cohort results indicate a stronger cohort. When looking at previous MCAS results, they had more students who scored proficient or advanced than when they were in seventh and, or the students, they're the same students, they scored, you know, in a, they scored better than the previous cohort as seventh and eighth graders, is I guess the short way to say it. And they continued their trend of higher performance and higher growth. Not only in ELA, this is also indicative in mathematics and in science. So, that, I think that's a fairly strong indication that not only is it a strong cohort, but there's a lot of good things happening there. We're paying attention constructionally. All the specifics of, you know, that happened, you know, at the other schools are also happening at the high school, having teachers talk to one another, getting teachers together. One of the things we did differently last year, we were concerned, we had a little, we had a dip in the advanced category going down to 41% in English language arts. So, I organized a, I guess, a summit, you could call it, or a gathering of English departments from about 25 area schools at the high school. We got, we hosted them and spent the day, half a day with them. And it was fabulous. They, they got an opportunity to learn from each other. Not only did our faculty benefit from this, but also the other faculties were very grateful for it and had a wonderful experience. It's something we'd like to continue. We'd like to do it with the mathematics group, but the Fitchburg is already hosted. So, perhaps we'll take, we'll do it in spring. But, we've already sent our math representatives out to, you know, I think it was just Kelly Ogden this year, who's our math coordinator, who attended Fitchburg High School math event. And there were lots of schools, at least 20, I think, were invited. I'm not sure if they all attended. But, that's, again, an opportunity for, for us to learn from other professionals in the area and help improve our results. All right. Again, you know, the cohorts, you know, results speak for themselves. The bar graphs, you've got a chance to read them in your presentation. So, I think it's getting, the hour's getting late, so I won't talk too much about the cohort change. But, it's just a fabulous, you know, thing to report that our students did so well. Next steps. Further data analysis and examination of student growth percentiles. That was in last year's presentation. And it's a reason why it's repeated because we want to keep, maintain consistent practices that work well. And we want to track that data. We want to, and Mark had mentioned a little bit, I think, about looking at it more closely at, not just at the aggregate level, but at individual levels, like seeing how students, tracking how students are growing individually over time. That requires a lot more attention to detail. We'll do our best with all the competing mandates and initiatives, but that's something we think would, would certainly help. We've already started the refinement and implementation of the clear and documented data analysis process. Dr. Jamian pointed that out in her presentation. I think she added all the details that you need about that. But, we're certainly contributing to that at the high school level, too. We are going to, Dr. Jamian also pointed out the advanced use of Edwin Analytics. Our assistant principal, Mrs. Temple, attended a conference just this week on that. And I'm quite familiar with it. And so, we expect our coordinators, the six to 12 coordinators are familiar with it. And we're expecting that that'll have some benefits as well. But, keep in mind, as everyone has pointed out, this is one test. And there's a lot of other things going on, a lot of other ways we measure student success. So, we don't want to overemphasize with all the attention paid publicly, politically to MCAS scores, accountability. We don't want to overemphasize the, the test. We want to focus on the standards that they're trying to assess and focus on the solid curriculum behind that. Instructional adjustments will be, are also a traditional thing in our next steps, that are a traditional bullet. And we do try to continually adjust our practices as needed. We do emphasize a proactive approach. That's especially important because, you know, we don't want to just be reacting to negative results. We want to sort of anticipate areas of difficulty, students who are likely to not be successful based on prior performance or based on issues, concerns that, that occur during the course of a school year early on. We like to make those adjustments as best we can. So, early intervention is one of our hallmarks. It's one of our dedicated courses of action. And we'll continue that. And lastly, we continue to use the academic support grant provided by the state for that, explicitly for that early intervention. I tried to be succinct as possible, given the hour. I hope that helps. I'm happy to answer any questions. If I missed anything, happy to elaborate.
Form a comment and a question, but one of the themes that went through all three presentations was the use of data analysis. And it, it's obvious that the use of data analysis is extensive and it sounds like it's becoming more refined and, you know, better used throughout the district than it, than it ever was when I first got involved here. But, I like what you just said, Dr. Harrington, a moment ago about how even though we're doing that, it's with a goal of, you know, strengthening the standards and forming the curriculum rather than deliberately trying to do better on the MCAS, which we already do pretty well on anyway. Because my only concern would be if I didn't hear something like that, that the use of data analysis would be to chase our own tail. You know, just every year we'd be start chasing something else. And then, next year, we'd stop and chase another thing because we thought that's what the information was telling us to do. So, I feel like there's a, even though we keep using more and more of it, it's in a more and more informed way. And I think it has a positive impact on how we go about it. And it even helps us inform why we might not do something as well as why we do do something. As we come through these types of presentations, I feel very confident that that's being done. It makes me feel good. That's kind of how I go about my business, too.
Thank you. Yeah. Each fall, when we announce the results, the word I always use, whether it's reporting to the parents as well as to our faculty, is that, "Let's keep this in perspective." Try to have a balanced viewpoint about the MCAS results and remember that there are multiple measures of student achievement, student performance. So, I appreciate you as well saying that. Thank you.
Yeah, just really quickly. We have a lot of good, good scores at that high school. I wanted to point out in particular the LPS class of 2015 math. When we saw the test year, year to year, we saw that not just the number, the total number of advanced and proficient go up, but in this past year, we've saw, we saw a huge spike where now 70% of those students are in the advanced category. So, there was an earlier, I think in the middle school, Darryl was talking about how it's important that we not just focus on the, on the lower two categor- important that we not just focus on the, on the lower two categories, but also within the upper category, within that upper half, we want to see more people in advanced and proficient. And that is, that is difficult, particularly after middle school and at Russell Street. Those exams, I think, tend to be harder across the state, across all levels. But I think that's just a huge, a huge improvement, and I like to see that.
Alex, if I could just add to that. The, that's something the higher achieving districts focus on now, it seems to be. When MCAS first came about, it was about achieving proficiency, and then it became almost this competition, and colleagues have referenced the Boston dot com or the Boston Globe rankings, and they start to measure each other or compare each other and compare it based on advanced standings, or how many students scored in the advanced categories on a different test. We try to minimize that emphasis on comparisons, as everyone has spoken to tonight, but it's certainly something we strive for, because we want to be, want to maintain high expectations of our students and believe that they can master the standards at a higher level with lots of support and preparation. And the, the MCAS assessment is, is an indicator that they are. So we're, we have had that consistent performance over time. Little dips here and there, but that's to be expected in any, any type of test-taking scenario that's given over time. The other thing, just to go back to Mike's comment, Mr. Fontanella's comment about the use of Edwin Analytics, one of the benefits of that is actually not just for the MCAS, but the use of this data analysis process that, that Dr. Jamian highlighted in the beginning of the evening, or beginning of the presentation, that has transfer capability or applications in other areas for us, where we can say, oh, these are some great reports to run about MCAS, but what if we did this in a formative way with some other internal assessment? And we use it to track, you know, you know, it's, we're learning a lot about how to analyze data, not just for the MCAS, but for all kinds of assessments and ways of grading students, but we really like to use the word assessing, assessing and helping students learn and grow. So that's, that's the key piece, is using the assessment to inform instruction and help students learn.
Great. The only thing that I would ask then is, is as, as those data mining, as our data analysis gets, gets even more advanced, just every now and then, let us know how it's going, keep us posted. What are the, the newest trends that we're seeing in terms of what we can analyze?
It's part of how we do our business, right? Absolutely.
Makes it easier for us to do ours, too, so thank you.
No, no significant comments, and I actually appreciate you reiterating that MCAS is just one data point, particularly at the high school level, since you still have two more years of high school by the time you get the MCAS testing, and we don't want to be forgetting the rest of, you're not done, just because they graduate past tenth grade MCAS, and not losing the focus on that is, is important.
Thank you. Could agree completely.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment, because again, we still have those high needs children at the high school, and I think you can see here how, yes, they start out and they're probably more affected by the deficits they come in with, but the longer that they are in the Littleton public schools, the more that education really helps them, so that by the time they are at the tenth grade level, you don't not see that same level of impact of all their deficits, you really see them achieving really well. So again, I think that's a real testimony to the quality of the education that students can get here, that you can really make up some of those challenges that children have by having a very good school system.
Thank you. And we celebrate that success, as much as we celebrate the success of student, you know, going from, you know, advancing from say, needs improvement or proficient to advanced category from the time they were in eighth grade to high school, we, we go almost bananas over in our celebration around a kid who's just struggled so hard in school, we're aware of it, we've been working so closely, and we know it's sort of touch and go whether they'll pass the test, and they're feeling super anxious about it. When they get those results back, it's one of the best thrills I have in my, you know, year, I guess, when we get to say to a student, you passed the test, and they come out, they, I have kids that always reply, no, really? They don't believe it at first, because they had such low expectations of their, their capabilities at the time, or that they would actually pass. They doubted, and because of the support of our special ed staff, which is extensive and so helpful, you know, that's something we celebrate, too.
Chloe, would you mind sharing maybe some of your experience over the years, anxieties, maybe the night before, the day of, or how the test actually tested, assessed, if you will, what you knew?
Okay, so I guess with the disclaimer that I haven't taken an MCAS in like a year and a half or something, but like the last one...
Flush that memory right out.
Oh, yeah. So the last one I took in 10th grade, I remember it was very frustrating, because the question that we were given for the long composition was something about like identifying the villain in a book you had read, which hopefully, like you have the critical thinking skills that you want to have in 10th grade, and like what, like, like we're reading, you know, like The Crucible and Death of a Salesman and stuff, so like books that you aren't, there's not like, here's the bad guy and here's the good guy, you know what I mean? So I think that there's like a lot of stuff like that where you have to kind of regress to take the test effectively, and that's really frustrating for me anyways. I remember it was like, I got, getting my score back and being like, what did I do wrong here? And I think it was that, you know, like you try and make a more complex point, then you can be punished for it, as far as the MCAS goes. So that's like, I guess that was something that I really didn't like about it, is I felt like it was asking us to, you know, what we were being asked to do in class was on a higher level than what was being tested. So I guess it's to the credit of the high school, really, but...
I think that's true, I think your English teachers would agree with you on that, that it's a formulaic essay portion of the test, especially at the high school. I think it's true for, you know, the five paragraph essay that the Russell Street principal mentioned tonight, you know, that it is, but we do, we don't, it's a minimum expectation for us, really, you know, and it is for the state, for students to pass the MCAS.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the point is, is that Willie Lowman is the good guy and the bad guy.
Lesson tonight.
Thank you.
The duality that makes it interesting.
That's the argument I tried to make in my essay.
So I know some of you have a ways to go, and we're trying to finish the bulk of our business, so you're certainly welcome to move. Okay. Oh, wasn't he talking to me?
Man, I thought he was talking to me.
It was last time, too. Okay, though. Goals, school committee goals. I recall when we left off on this last week, we had him up on the board, and Daryl had offered some suggestions, and we seemed to lean that, and we asked Daryl to examine a little bit more in depth, and then to give us his thought on how he was going to expand on them. Just Daryl, and hand it over to you.
Okay, if you could maybe put up the presentation, or just the, the goals there. So last week, after listening to everybody talk, I took a crack at restructuring them slightly, and what I wanted to do is maybe try to pull them up just to a slightly higher level. Some of our goals were almost just procedures during it, so I took a, took a crack at that, and then tried to expound a little bit on what we want to accomplish, kept the timeline, you know, because I think trying to debate the format of the goals really isn't gonna, isn't really what we wanted to do here on it. So I restructured them that way, and then I, I didn't get a chance, and I think we need to start thinking about is, what is success? In the past, we, you know, the criteria is not necessarily executing the step, it's how effective that step is in achieving the overall goal, and I'd like to maybe us think about how we would add, you know, and just coin phrases that's even in the district vision plan, what are the indicators of success here? And like I said, it's more than just accomplishing the step, you know, writing the letter to the, to our state representatives, is I hope, I think we have a greater expectation of some kind of result from that, and then how effective were we in doing that there? So if I step through a couple of them here, and if you could just hold, just before you leave there, because I, I picked up something that you were talking about before. So, you know, I think forefront, we put our first goal is advocacy to advance student learning. I think having a student-centered goal on that is very important there. And then a few meetings ago, you had mentioned your desire to incorporate and meet with the other student leaders in terms of getting more input, in terms of the, the different schools going on there. And thinking about that a little bit, having something here that emphasizes all the successes of the, of the student achievement, I think would be important, and maybe even using that as a, as a student-led segment of our meeting as a goal, so that it reinforces right off at the opening of the, of the meetings here, a celebration of successes here, and then our opportunity to tie that into the educational goals that those are proceeding there. Perhaps using the student rep to lead the introduction and presentation, making, coordinating with the administration. I'm going a little further than I intended on that, but I wanted to catch just something Chloe had mentioned before, and how we can incorporate even the student inputs into our goal process here a little bit more on it. And I think that just gives us a different opportunity to look at the higher level piece of how are we celebrating the success, and then tying it into our, our educational objectives here. And then that just ties into the other milestone of us refining our use of the school website and social media and other means to, to get it out, other than just through the weekly article that may show up in the Littleton Independent, or people that watch the replay of, of this, of this presentation here. So just sort of continuing that theme there, you know, picked up on, we talked a lot about expanding our support with the other boards, and, you know, we've had successful meetings with them, I think we have a good working relationship with them. I think we still have an education gap in terms of us, them understanding our needs, and us understanding where they're coming from sometimes on it. So increase, using more opportunities to increase the dialogue, to get better synergy, so that we're all in the same sheet of music, so to speak, when we talk about supporting our educational goals here.
Chloe?
Yeah, I just wanted you to hear the first part when I introduced that piece there.
Okay, okay. I have a question. So like when you talk about that, that segment, are you, I'm not entirely sure what content you would want to be happening then, like, like talking about just different things that different kids have done, or like...
So I, I didn't want to take too many liberties with driving the whole goal discussion in one particular area there, but like right now, we have you as tucked up under a part of the superintendent's report, sort of in the middle and the end of the meeting here. You know, little things to just emphasize the student involvement in it, move it to the front of the meeting, use that to help introduce, you know, we were talking about bringing in some of the, the student presentations there. Maybe sliding some of those responsibilities onto our student reps to emphasize there's a more role than just, in terms of when you become elected to the, you know, the student president there at the different schools. You know, it's more than just a symbolic meaning. There might be actual responsibilities that go along with that. And then we could also look at ways of how, what, at the different grade levels, the appreciation of the board for their work, because we only see it oftentimes just through little snippets, and often via proxy, via either one of the principals' presentations or not.
You could, you process that properly.
Right. But I mean, just in terms of, you know, we're thinking about it, just in terms of, it shifts the focus a little bit, in terms of what are we emphasizing during even your presentations during, to the committee here, and what kind of message that sends for advocating for our students.
And I just wanted to make a note here, that per law, Chloe is a full school committee member, not, you know, ex officio. And generally, and Chloe's approach to this, spoke to this at the very beginning of her tenure here, she said, you know, I want to do more than just, just read the calendar. I want to, I want to talk about how students are doing, what we're doing well, what we need to work on, and I think this is a very, a very good way of doing that. I'm not sure exactly if we want to, if we want to have every meeting have Chloe introduce something, because maybe...
It may be too much.
Right. But some sort of involvement beyond what is currently done, I think. My feeling is that's what you're getting at, is some sort of involvement beyond what, what's already done by the student rep, and I think that's certainly a good idea. I'm not sure how best we would, we would work that out. Certainly, I think Chloe should have some insight on that, but I think we're in the right direction.
So the, the underlying objective is, is just to, again, just change a little bit of the emphasis, it changes a little bit of the messaging, both to us and then back to the community, about the involvement of the students in our advocate, our role as advocates for learning there. So anyway, that was, that's why I asked you to stay just for that particular part, feel free to run off now.
I'm going to do homework.
And go do homework there. Objective three under that, I, I was listening to the talks on the budget preparation process, and I think we got mired in the details there, and I sort of pulled that back a little bit and was thinking about it as, as a couple of thoughts that came across, was the timeline aspect of it, which we could keep a goal of publishing that. I think we have one, it just may not be as noted, known as it could be. But milestone two, I threw, I introduced this one here, because as we go through the budget process here, is there an opportunity for us to solicit a specific public input before the finalization presentation of the budget? I know we, all of our meetings are open and people are always welcome to come, but we all know they don't. They are, so the first time the public really sees the budget is during the, the formal hearing where it's virtually finalized at that point, and maybe people are feeling disenfranchised during the process there. So is there something that we could introduce sooner into that to have a specific session to solicit public input before our finalization of the budget? Got to put a longer screen, sign out on this. And then objective four was, again, just looking at how are we engaging our state representatives, and I know we've talked about writing a letter, we've talked about inviting them, maybe we need to be a little bit more forceful in, in actually making that happen here. And again, I think it's, it's a combination of recognizing back to them what, what's good things are happening in it, not just complaining about, you know, what shortfalls we have, but I think it's an opportunity for dialogue. I know the state reps take a, take a initiative to visit the Board of Selectmen annually, and maybe we should try to step up our efforts to, to do that there. If I move on to goal two, I titled it streamlining committee operations here, and, you know, again, I, just picking up this focus on issues here. Last year, we introduced using the thematic approach, so that you have the consistent messaging, one district, the vertical alignment, and the themes behind the pieces there. I'm proposing a little bit here that we start utilizing our read-ahead packet a little bit more, so that we maximize the interchange we have with the senior admin staff versus just passively receiving information. We spend a lot of time just receiving the bulk of the information and then squeezing the questions. I find it more useful to, to pre-read and then have the dialogues. I found the discussions on the park and the Common Core last week very engaging there, and it was just a short little memo that we were, had, we're discussing, and we didn't have a long presentation to prep us for it there. So, you know, we talk about using a flipped classroom and other models in the, in for our students and using the teacher time, maybe we ought to be thinking about how we're using our interaction time with the senior, the senior staff there. And then, you know, I obviously can keep my personal policy review goal in there, because I think it is important, first, to get, continue through the comprehensive policy review. Goal three, we didn't specifically talk about it last week, but we are in the process of updating the vision, the district vision plan, and I think we should have a goal here. I need to, I need a few more inputs on this one, to what are the milestones behind it, but I think obviously we need to be strongly supporting the administration in the update of that district vision plan, and our commitment to either resource not only the creation of it, but resource the execution of it, and we should have a goal specific to that in here, my recommendation on that. And then finally, we are entering, you know, the contract negotiations here, and I think the real initiative in that is trying to switch to a, utilize a different bargaining scheme, rather than the traditional negotiation scheme here. I think, I think we're trying to make a big push to try this interest-based bargaining approach on it as a specific goal, as opposed to the traditional bargaining piece here, and we want to, I guess this message is that we are committed to try to, I know we've already started the process by, with the letters to the LEA and the training there, but I think this demonstrates... but I think this demonstrates our commitment to changing business. It's not just business as usual. We're looking for new and different ways of engaging future. Again, I think these types of changes would send messaging to the community about, you know, we're not just doing it the same old way. We're looking at different ways of doing it. We're looking at the students first and then, like I said, I think we should be also thinking about what, what does success mean on, on each of these? And it's not just executing the step. So that's where, how I digested last week's discussion and tried to frame them back up in this format for everybody here today.
I, I think the format's great. You know, obviously there's some good content in here. I don't think it's complete content in here. I don't even know that given the hour, we're going to address content.
What's in here?
Or a little? But I, I mean, I can't, I, I could work with that. I, I feel more comfortable trying to work through this type of, of presentation than, than some of the other ones that we've used in the past. I think this is more meaningful. I also think that these types of goals would be more malleable as time passes. I think a couple of these would always be there. Some we'd add in and out depending on what we were busy doing or not busy doing it. But, you know, we can leave them there and then just, you know, change them as we see fit, given the circumstances we're in. So I really do think this is worthwhile. I appreciate the effort.
Yeah, I really like this, this improvement into the format. I also like some of the, some of the goals. A couple of comments, if I just go down chronologically here. For goal one, maybe we should turn that to advocate instead of advocacy, just more of a grammatical alignment issue. For objective one, after successes, I'd like to add and needs, so we, so we make known both the district successes and needs. I really like that milestone one right there, incorporate all successes. I'd also like to add and needs to that again. Again, with the student rep piece, I think that needs to be massaged a little. I don't, I don't know the answer. I'm not, I'm not comfortable saying tonight that that is the answer.
I would expect that we'd engage our student rep in that also as well as the administration.
Right. And at this hour, I think you'd rather we not, so. So that's something I really like the idea of. I'm not sure we're there yet. My other comments, objective three, milestone one, I think that really, really hit the nail on the head there in terms of the conversation we were having last week about clarifying our budget process to the public, which we already have. In my last, last week, I didn't, I want to, want to make sure I wasn't stepping on any, anyone's toes there. Certainly, I didn't want to take the budget out of the budget subcommittee. That's probably the last thing the rest of us would want in terms of all the work you do there with the administration. What I would add to this objective, to this milestone here, excuse me, would be to include documents used in the process. So when, when the budget subcommittee meets, just that those documents become available for-
Yeah, we could talk about that at some point. The problem is, is that a lot of those documents, it's kind of like watching sausage being made. If you don't have the context by which you got the final product-
It's okay.
You might be grossed out or you might, or worse, you might not understand, you might see something that sets you off in a panic without the context of understanding what we, how we were discussing it. That's why we're pretty careful about what we present and when we present it, because when you're talking about the budget, it can set off a lot of alarms for a lot of people, you know, if you, if you're just talking gross numbers. So I, I have no problem, you know, talking in terms of what, giving more material, and we did talk, we've talked about this in the past as a committee, is supplying more material that backs up, you know, the discussion that we're having. I just wouldn't be, I don't think, I don't think anything that we do, we would release every piece of material that we have. I mean, it's all there. It's all, if anybody asks for it, we obviously we make it available. But in terms of trying to put the message out there and help people understand where we're getting to, just overloading them with the information isn't always the answer. It's not really helpful.
I agree. I agree.
Just trying to strike that balance.
Absolutely, absolutely. And certainly, again, we need to massage that somewhat. I, I would just sort of push back a little bit that the timeline and process isn't enough, but I wouldn't want to reveal every single document necessarily before its time.
Right.
And sort of balancing that. Could we, could we sort of compromise there and say, including, you know-
Well, I think that, I think that some of the, the other milestones that are in there, the informal Q and A session, cost drivers, public hearing, obviously I think when you did those types of things, it would be inevitable that we would have material available because that would, we wouldn't be able to have those kinds of presentations without it. So I think by nature that would happen.
Documents will be used in an open meeting, published to the web.
Right.
We use it in an open meeting, it's open, so published to the web. Every side note, every spreadsheet that Steve generates becomes someone's comment.
I don't, I don't even see all that and nor do I want to because it's not going to help me as someone who's involved in the budget subcommittee. It's really not going to help me.
Yeah.
You know, I assume that they're modeling things left and right and things start out on a piece of paper and then get taken off and then get put back later, you know, as the process goes on. And, you know, I see more of the finished product before other people do by virtue of being on the budget subcommittee, but at the same time, that doesn't mean I see everything either. And as I just said, I don't want to.
And I'm not-
It wouldn't be meaningful to me.
And I'm not advocating that. What I, my goal in this is that not just does the public see the timeline, but they can follow along to make sure, you know, to some extent that they're involved without, without getting too much.
Alex, it's their budget development and approval timeline.
I want, I want documents, some documents used included in that because the timeline, I don't think-
That's what you just said, all documents used in open meeting, we publish on the website.
But not the budget subcommittee meeting.
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting.
But I don't see them online. So maybe that's more of a tech issue.
Well, I think that, but we just said we're not going to-
Right. And I'm not asking for that.
So let's, let's not go down a debate on this tonight. Let's go through this. We've got an idea we want the goal to be now quippling over whether it's 10 documents or 100 documents.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's continue.
All right. Great. For milestone three, under objective three, that could be a place where we could even write, you know, an indicator of success, but I'll get into that a little bit later in terms of, did we actually do this? But that's, I'll speak about, speak on that later. We can skip over that for now. Objective four, I think when we talk, we need to identify what these are when we engage with our state reps. I, I think we'll talk about our needs and I think, you know, we do write, we do occasionally write letters. I think spelling out what some of the things we need are prior to engaging with them might be more helpful. Last week, we're talking about PARC. That's something that comes up right away. And so we say, all right, PARC, let's contact the reps. When we talk about more of a, from, from a broader perspective over the course of the year, what are the some things, some of the things on our minds in terms of concerns for that? So just a note there. And I would add, I would add to this goal, to goal one, and a fifth objective, which would be to expand awareness of non-academic student successes and challenges, under which I'd have a milestone.
Taking notes.
I'll, I can send these to you and to you all.
Because you lost me that one. You went backwards. So which one were you picking up?
Sure. So goal one, I would create, I would hope we could create an objective five, which would expand awareness of non-academic student success and challenges. As we were all saying tonight, that, that after a 90-minute presentation, it's probably a little longer than that, we're looking at one metric, one measure of academics. We also all said that we also want to hear about the whole child. We want to make sure the whole child is being developed. And so this objective sort of gets at that. The milestone, which is just my idea of a milestone, would be twice a year, we could have a presentation on the social, emotional, physical, mental health of, of a student, including, including bullying information, which we collect, just not, not who's being bullied, but how many, how many incidents are we hearing every, every six months, that sort of data, which is available. I wish we had it right here, but alas, it's laid out on our-
A report.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a, yeah. A report on student health and, and not just physical health, but also the mental, emotional, as well as the social health.
Got it.
Great. And goal two, I would, I would encourage adding an objective three, which just, would just be to improve school committee self-evaluation, the self-evaluation process. I know MASC does a lot of, has a lot of resources out there. I'm not familiar with all of them for what we could do. But one, one thing could be, we're in late November now. We've had a lengthy discussion about these goals. We're, we've done a lot of work, I think, from what the document was originally to where we are now. Hopefully, we don't do that much work next year, but I think it might be good to have a milestone of having this discussion start at the century as, as we did this year and then have a goal set, to set a goal this year of having our next year's goals set by the end of September, so we're not in November of the year that we're setting our goals for, which this year I think was necessary, given all the time and discussion and the changes that have gone into it. I think we've valued, we've gotten a lot of value from that, but I think making sure we know what our goals are earlier in the school year next year will make it a leaner machine and certainly more effective.
We were not without goals.
I know.
You realize that?
Right.
We had goals and we continued working those goals. Now gold refinement for this year going forward, and these may last us to the next year also, that we want to put some sort of timeline to it. There's nothing wrong with that. But to be clear, we have not been goalless.
No. No, we have not.
Good.
No. So I can-
Unless you feel we've been goalless.
No.
That would be very important to know.
No, I have not felt we've been goalless.
Good.
Without goals, as it were. So I can send those comments to Darryl if that works with everyone, those, that language.
Yeah, let's take a look at it, just like we took a look at this.
Great.
Because certainly we listened to your, your speech there. We want to see it down on paper, it'll be helpful too.
Yeah. Anything that stuck out as an issue?
Well, you got into a lot of processes too that might go in here.
Right.
Procedures are not in here.
That's at the middle.
And that's why I interrupted with Chloe, because we were starting to go down a rabbit hole there that wasn't serving the objective of the year. So you'll be able to help Darryl Kelly with number three?
Yes. Yeah. That, and number three really, awesome here. Really is going to tie in when we do our presentation, December 12th anyway.
Okay, good.
With our strategic mind, so.
All right. Conversation for the whole couple of months on these goals, I think's been very helpful. Appreciate it because it gives an opportunity for us to have an idea what we're thinking about what's important to us. And obviously it reflects what's important to the community also. So the process has been worthwhile in my mind for sure and the final product would be very useful. All right, anything else on these then? All right, so get it to Darryl as quick as you can, then please, and the rest of us. Let's take an opportunity to look at that and then we can press on. And then, Darryl, if you like, at that point, for December 12th, is when we meet again? Is that right?
Right.
For that meeting, you could have Mitch cleaned up based on all this conversation.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, send him back out to us so we can take a look and then, you know, any crib notes we want to add to that, get back to Darryl. And then we have that, yeah. All right, thank you. Kelly, you want to talk about food service or you want to hang on to that the next week or until the-
Pretty basic.
Okay.
PJ, in terms of, my pad's running out of power. The numbers are in front of you and you'll notice that they look good this month. You also have to remember that there are 22 days. We had more days this month. So we're still watching that. Our subcommittee's still meeting and I've asked them to have some definitive recommendations to me prior to Christmas. We've made some changes in our high school program, but our middle school program is still in limbo. I want to see what we can do there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, under our old business, if we'd like to discuss quickly the wrestling program request as well?
Yeah, I'll go back to it in a second.
And the other piece of information there, Chairman Lovella's official notification of the bargaining unit, and I sent a letter and enclosed it in your packet.
Yeah, this I was going to mention next, yes, I got that. Go ahead, Dusty.
Yeah, so as a follow-up from last week, the committee asked me to follow up on the wrestling program request to move the program from Russell Street to Shekelane and move the shed to Shekelane. Asked me to follow up with other time departments, the highway department, building inspector, fire department. I have followed up with all of those departments. There are just a couple of minor things that need to be fixed. The building permit needs to be updated to reflect a change in location on the shed. The highway department is able to adjust for snow removal and things like that. We did check the utility drawings. There don't appear to be utilities under that side of the shed. And we did check with the company that, that helped design that septic system for that school and is currently the company that monitors that. And they don't have any issues with the location of that shed on that side. So I think the wrestling program was looking for a school committee approval to go ahead and move that shed.
You guys want to work on that tonight or they're practicing there now?
I mean, do we need a vote or do we just need to kind of give them that's okay with us, go ahead and do it?
I'd like to have Chuck here, if you guys are okay with that. I know we can take some of the movement.
I mean, I think, I think that's fine as long as, I think your, your point was made that we're not restricting the wrestling team from moving forward. They're seated, right, they're on their way.
Well, there is an issue with mat storage. We're temporarily storing them within the gym right now. It does take up some space. So as we get into the colder weather and the kids now start to use the gym indoor, it may be an issue. So it can wait until December 12th. That's probably not a problem, but they are looking to move that shed as soon as possible before the cold weather comes.
Here's what I'd like Chuck, he's been involved in this and he's also a partner representative visiting.
Yes.
So, you guys okay with that?
Like to having him be the final arbiter?
No, 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 no.
Just waiting for him.
Yeah, have him involved in the discussion then, that's all. That's all right?
I'm okay with that. Yep.
Okay. In our old business, we talked about PARC, Common Core, and we had discussion last week. We talked about sending a letter. No movement on that tonight. Take a look at it, please. Off your thoughts and Kelly and I'll clean it up and then get it back out to you all and expect that we asked you that we sent it after the next meeting. It'll be over. Interested citizens? Are here and none? DMC or exposed?
They're looking at each other to decide who's more interested.
Let's go first. Well, I'm going to ask my questions anyways, even though the people I wanted to ask them of are gone, because I would like to make note of it. Well, the question I had was, because I think Mr. Clancy can convey the questions and come back maybe next time.
Would you like to ask him directly in a meeting and can we-
Well, I'd like to you for to hear them as well.
We'll be here too.
We'd be here.
Well, no, because I, I would like to just ask them.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I'd like to clarify that the high needs population is not all three. You don't have to be both, have a disability, low income and-
That's correct. I clarified that with Rita that.
Yes.
It doesn't necessarily have to be all three.
You have to have one.
Could be one, two, three, or just one, yep.
Right. The other thing I want to caution is that when Rita made mention about the progress of students going through the district, and I think, yes, it's great. We do make a lot of progress. That's wonderful. But I just want to caution that we also have a, that are out of district students and the bulk of those students are in grade, from grade seven and up. So that could also skew some of those numbers. So that could, our numbers in that category could go down and we think that we're improving in that area when really those numbers have been removed because they're out of district. That could influence, or they could be taken out and switched over to like an MCAS alt or something. So I just want to caution you on that. Because it's in that age category, the upper grades, not the lower grades.
We've, we've had those conversations before around the table, but our demographics don't remain static. That is, that's a good point.
I just, it's, it's just, it's the upper grades versus the lower grades. That's why I just want to make caution of that. And Mr. Buzidlo had mentioned that they're starting to follow the LMS model for the data teams with children. And I'm curi, I'm curious to know where the parents are in that model. Are they involved? Do they communicate with parents at all or parents know nothing about that? As well as my, that would be the same question I would have for, because you mentioned the question I would have for, because you mentioned the LMS model, Mr. Branko, and where are the parents involved in that process as well? Because I don't know that they are involved at all.
I'm not sure what you're, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
You're talking about, like, the admin team sitting down and crunching the data?
Well, you're talking about a specific student and that student struggles. Do they ever involve the parent about that specific student? When they're starting to drill down, because, you know, do they ever reach out to the parent? That's, you know...
Yeah.
It sounds like a student support team, but I don't, I mean...
Well, the part of, part of the student support team, Jen, is to work with a parent to develop an education plan, not an IEP.
No, I know. They're very different.
But yeah, there is outrage.
And the other thing is, I just wanted to make mention, with Mr. Branko talked about parents coming up to him in identifying success, or growth in their students. And I just wanted to, I'm one of those parents, so I just wanted to recognize. And I have made reference to and acknowledge that with both the staff member and him. And I would like to share that with you. I have a student that has struggled for several years, going back to kindergarten in a particular area. And I don't know what it is with this particular staff member at the middle school, but this staff member has gotten my child to do things that no other staff member in all the years she's been in the school system has gotten him to do. And it's not just within her content area. It's, it is across all other content areas. And it's not just within the four walls of the school. It's happening across all areas at home and everywhere else. So that is huge for us as a family, not to have that struggle anymore. And this is a typical child. This is not a child that is a special needs child, or on an IEP, or a 504, or anything. I want to make that clear, because I, you all know I have a child that is on that. And I just think that's really important for you to hear. I do think one thing that comes to mind is, it's a connection a teacher makes with a child. And that, I think, really, we have to stop and look at. And I think when we make placements for students to go to a class, I think that's really important. And I think we do do a good job, but in, for whatever reason, this teacher has connected with my child, and it's, I just want to recognize that.
Thank you for sharing this. That's very helpful.
It is. It's amazing. This is a child, but if he can, if he can get away with two words, he thinks you're wasting his time by, by having to write or do anything more. And this teacher has him writing pages now.
That's great.
So it's fabulous.
By policy, I'm sorry. Anything else?
Yes, Darryl offended me. No, I'm just saying, nobody comes to these meetings. Oh, you're going to make me talk now?
By policy, at 10:30, we make the determination that we'll finish by 11. I think we will finish by 11. Policy achieved.
Yep.
Okay. Darryl, go.
I thought, hold on.
Hold on, we get the budget subcommittee.
I was just going to say, you know, I was just going to say that I think that, you know, it was very informational, you know, the whole, here in Girland and the other, the principals addressed the MCAS, but more the idea of collectively getting together with admin and our staff about looking at how to improve. And I just think that it's really important if we can, if that can be conveyed to parents, you know. I know that, you know, we all know they're doing it, but we don't hear more about maybe some of the protocol changes that they've decided to make, or some of the improvements, and how they're doing that. And I really do think parents would be incredibly receptive and interested in hearing about how this is happening, because when we're home helping our student or assisting with homework, it's much better if we know how things are being sort of directed at school. And I know you can't tell them every fine point, but the idea of how the teacher wants them to approach in a general sense, and how parents can advocate to bring that process at home as well. Because some students do still need, even in, up to the middle school level, and maybe even high school level, where they get a little bit of extra support or push, and, and that it's sort of bring, you know, it's more, it's essentially bringing what's at school home and, and through, so that they could reinforce those strategies and, and ways that the teachers are trying to help them. I do think it's really important. It can be extremely helpful for parents to be supportive in that way.
Thank you.
So on Saturday, we had the budget summit, where they were, they were here all day. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee meeting with all the town departments to talk over budget priorities. I gave a presentation there. I was going to give the same presentation tonight, but I'd rather do it on December 12th. We'll have more people in the room, and it will be more meaningful. It was well received. It was a very amicable discussion. It wasn't overly long. Obviously, they, they were getting through a long day. So I'm sure they'll have a more robust response as we get further down the road as a town informing our budget for the next fiscal year. But in general, it went well, and we'll talk about it more in detail next week. Give us somebody to read our motions, change the word first to second.
So...
No candy?
It's on my kitchen table. I walked out without it. Sorry, guys.
This night's just getting worse and worse. Let's...
So I think last week's method of handling the minutes, I mean, the policies was very successful. We focused on just the one question and clarified that. And I heard no other recommended changes for the policies. So I guess I just request that, let me make the motion on the, on the revised second readings and resins as drafted last week.
All right, I'm fine with that. I don't have any further comments on them. I make the motion that we accept for the second reading the following policies as reviewed: BBA, BBAA, GA, GBEB, GBEC, GBI, GBK, GDO, KBA, KBE, KDB, KDD, KEC, KHA, KJA, and KLG.
Second.
All right, so that was on the review, second reading?
Reviewed, correct.
Okay, any further discussion? All's favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Ayes have it.
Any others?
I feel like I'm reading up radio stations west of the Mississippi. All right, I make a motion that we accept for the second reading of the following policies as revised: JICF, BA, BB, BHC, GBEA, GCE, GCF, GCIA, GCRD, GDB, KA, KCB, KE, and KI.
Second.
Which made second. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes?
Mike, when you read this next back, add GDI at the end of it.
G, E, J. All right, accept for the second reading the recommendation to rescind the following policies: BAA, BBBA slash BBBB, BBBC, BBBE, GBD, GB, GB, GCA, GCBA, GCBC, GTA, stop making me laugh, GDF, GDJ, KA dash P, KDCB, KDCB dash P1, KDCB dash R, KDF, KEB, KEB dash R, and GDI. GD. No, sorry, just GD.
Second.
Which made second. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Votes?
Aye.
He's got the GBDs.
GB, GB, I think CBGB, and that's where I'd like to be, is someplace like that, not here right now.
Anyone think we need an executive session?
No.
No, no. All right, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy next Thursday. As we said earlier in the meeting, if you remember, five hours back or so, football game, Thanksgiving Day. And just before the football game at the middle school is Rotary Serving Breakfast. Come on out for close, please.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Which made second. Any further discussion? Nope. Favor?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Thanks, folks.
Aye. I need to be a going guy. I gotta go. My wife's waiting for Ryan. Yeah, exactly.
You guys have to move the table.
Kirby, is this how we found the tables when we came in?